Present.
La liberty?
Here.
First item on our agenda this evening is citizens input. Madam Clerk, written individuals who've signed up first, please.
Yes. Dear Mayor Coogan, Superintendent Malone, and members of the school committee, we co-authored a letter to you dated February 3, 2021, on behalf of Fall River Confronting Discrimination Committee for Inclusion in the Citizens Input Section of the February School Committee Meeting. The letter was read, which we appreciated, but three sections were excluded. Specifically, the term "hate speech" was omitted along with the recommendation that diversity and inclusion training for all school community members, beginning with the superintendent
Fall River City Council meeting will now be called to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Cadine? and school committee members.
Here.
Dionne? Further, the paragraph pertaining to Dr. Malone's past actions and our belief that
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty LeBeau? the school committee's actions reflect a school culture and climate that is in desperate
Here.
Lee?
Here.
need of change was omitted. Peckham?
Here.
When we inquired as to the rationale for these exclusions, we were referred to a policy Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Yeah.
statement pertaining to citizens input at school committee meetings. President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, Laura, any person may make an audio or video recording
Unfortunately, the policy we were shown lacked specifics as to why this potential violation
of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium.
of our freedom of speech was instituted.
Attendees are therefore advised of such recordings or transmissions of being made whether perceived
In the aforementioned letter, we asked two questions. One, by what date can the Fall River community expect to learn the school system's diversity
or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. At this time, I'd like to welcome the members of the school committee, Mr. Superintendent,
task force will be established and charged with developing specific and measurable goals? This question was answered in part last week as you submitted the task force memorandum
his finance team, Mrs. Sahadi, and Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, if you can open up your meeting.
for our review.
I can open this meeting.
Number two, by what date can Fall River community expect to learn that an educational, training,
While the school committee is done, please call the roll.
diversity, and inclusion requirement for all constituents of the Fall River schools
Mr. Jagi?
Here.
Mr. Cosco?
Here.
community has been established, including a listing of the first session, presenters,
Mr. Harp?
Here.
Mr. Heslop?
Here.
and facilitators, and expected outcomes? We again request that you respond to our inquiry or inform us of your unwillingness to do so. Sincerely, David Millstone and Sarah Rodriks. President Ponti, Vice President La Liberty, members of the city council. As tonight, we are here for the kids of Fall River, of the Fall River Public Schools. I want to congratulate this council for holding the projects on the school department. Not because they ain't for the kids, because that is so not true. It's because we have a superintendent that feels he's too good to attend meetings, which he has had no problem doing in the past. Shame on Mayor Coogan and the school committee for not enforcing the superintendent to attend last month's city council meeting. No one, the councilors, wanted questions answered, which is what they are elected to do, not be a rubber stamp like the mayor or the school committee, since they let the superintendent do what he wants anyways. Well, except for Kevin and Paul, and I mean Paul Hart. I hope this city councilors get their questions answered and these kids get what they deserve when this should have already been passed. But yet, we let a guy running a district making over $200,000, which my opinion doesn't deserve it. And for an evaluation he got, for him to get a raise, clearly shows he's running the school committee. In closing, Superintendent Malone, tonight, you should do what everyone wants you to do, is to resign, because no one wants him there. Stop embarrassing the Fall River School District. Thank you, BSAF councilors and school committee men, Hart and Agia. The rest of you, wake up. This is submitted by David Olivera. And that's all we have.
Thank you. Next person to sign up is Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street, Fall River, regarding school department budget. Three minutes, Mr. Dias.
Good afternoon, members of the city council and of the school committee. I just think it's a shame, honestly, that our school department pays our teachers and our paraprofessionals so poorly. If you just want to look at the state average for paraprofessionals in Massachusetts, it's $31,000. And the full-time equivalent average in Fall River is almost $10,000 less, at $22,000. And the lowest state average of the salary for any paraprofessional in the United States is North Carolina, at $23,000. And this city cannot even pay our paraprofessionals, equivalent to the lowest state average in America. The average for a teacher in Massachusetts is $78,000. And Fall River has our average salary for teachers, and this is right from this year's budget, is over $10,000 less, at $65,000. Yet, this committee of four has the audacity to ask the city council for extra money to pay for baseball fields, football fields with fancy lights and school repairs. I think it's time that we set our priorities straight in the city. Before we go to the city council for fancy lights and grass, we should be paying a living wage towards, that live up to the state and national averages. Yet, we create these unneeded filler positions, like a PACE nurse, a PACE nurse, which is a program, all-inclusive care for the elderly. We create a special position, a nurse, that's meant for elderly people, and we put that in the school district. How does that make any sense? I wonder why the position was created for our school district. And we also created a family support special position that does absolutely nothing for Fall River. And we refuse to join South Coast Collaborative because we allowed big egos to rock the day. And we, that cost our city hundreds of thousands of dollars. Let's cut to the chase. This budget is anti-Fall River. Snubbing the city council, a duly-elected body, their request for an investigative report into our superintendent is anti-Fall River. Pay raise may be $1 or $25,000, as it's been reported. It's anti-Fall River. The nepotism and the lack of accountability in the school department is anti-Fall River. And I would just like to say, I hope this school committee does the right thing. However, I have no confidence in many of its members. And I hope in November, we can finally restore some leadership and maybe some accountability to the school department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. That will conclude our citizens' input. At this time, I'd like to welcome Mayor Coogan up to the council podium.
First of all, I'll be brief, so we can get the meeting moving. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and the city council for joining us along with the school committee. I just have a few words I would like to let the public know about. I believe that we're on the brink of a spectacular opportunity to reshape the finances of our city through the American Rescue Act. We have paid dearly for this opportunity. Our students, businesses, families have all been impacted by some form of hardship in the last year. Whether it's financial, emotional, or due to the loss of a loved one, for the last 13 months, we have lived with seemingly constant stress, uncertainty, and loss. However, as we prepare a budget for the upcoming fiscal year, it symbolizes not only a return to normalcy, but a return to growth in Fall River. It is my hope that we can all begin to heal by looking forward and preparing for a bright new era in Fall River. Fall River is already undergoing a revitalization that few would have ever predicted. With state-of-the-art renovations to our schools and our parks, and a booming housing market, renewed interest in downtown and our waterfront, and new industries settling down roots in Fall River, we are at the cusp of awakening, of an awakening in our city. The American Rescue Act will infuse enough one-time revenue to make sure we, as a city, are prepared for the bright new days. Whether it's improving our infrastructure, ensuring high-quality city services, or relieving the burden on all of our taxpayers. We are preparing a committee of stakeholders to help use this money and achieve a level of financial health that will carry us through the next decade and set the period ready for productivity in Fall River. I look forward to working with my colleagues on the city council and the school committee to ensure that we use this year's budget to better the lives of our families, our children, our seniors, and our residents who have been hit hard by this COVID-19 pandemic. The darkest days, I believe, are almost over, and I dedicate myself to ensuring that Fall River emerges from this crisis as a better, safer, and more livable community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just as a reminder to all that's here, the purpose of this joint meeting here today is, at least 75 days before the beginning of the year, the mayor shall call, which he did, a joint meeting of the city council and school committee, including the superintendent of schools, to review the fiscal and financial condition of the city, revenue and expenditure forecasts, and other relevant information prepared by the mayor in order to develop and coordinate a budget. Mrs. Sahadi, Mr. Superintendent, do you have a presentation to make at all, Mr. Superintendent?
My team does, yes.
Okay. I'll acknowledge Mrs. Sahadi first, as she has a PowerPoint, and then at that point, I'll invite your administration down.
Thank you, Council President. So for the purposes of the general public and for everyone here at the meeting today, the first few words that I have are regarding the process of the city budget and the city finances. This chapter or section six of the charter requires us to look at the past and the present in terms of the budgeting and where we're at, and it also allows us to forecast revenues and expenditures going into the future. So as you know, the budget is monitored on an ongoing basis. This city council receives on a quarterly basis, quarterly updates, and those quarterly updates include both the general fund as well as the enterprise funds. And by the charter, it's presented to the city council at the second meeting of each month following the quarter. So next Tuesday night, this council will be receiving the quarter end for March 31, 2021. All the city departments continue to monitor their budgets. We have, I have regular meetings with the city departments with regard to their needs and potential anticipated shortfalls. The capital needs, as you know, are presented to you in the fall of every year. You receive a capital budget that forecasts five years of capital needs in January of each year, and that document is really a living document. It's updated as the needs and the priorities change. And as you know, sitting here today, the document you received late December has already changed with some of the needs of our departments going forward. This annual budget that we work on each year, again, a living document, it continues to change until we present it to you 45 days before the beginning of the fiscal year, which we plan to have to you on May 15 this year. As we've discussed in the past, the departments present their needs and their wishes, if you will, and we, meaning the administration, work together with those departments to establish a budget that is a sound budget, a reasonable budget, and a balanced budget. And so, at that point, once that, once the mayor's budget is presented to you, at that time, the city council will then hold its public workshops on the proposed budget with passage of the budget by June 30, 2021. Last year was a very unique year, as you remember. We had a number of monthly budgets, month-to-month budgets. This year, we have no anticipation of month-to-month budgets. Where are we right now? The fiscal year '21, as I indicated, you'll be receiving your quarterly report at the next city council meeting, which is April 20, for those that don't know when we will be meeting again. And here is a couple of the highlights. The revenues that were collected through March 31 represent 74.4%. So we are really right where we need to be in terms of revenue collections for this current fiscal year. As far as the expenditures go, the city departments are at approximately 77.1%, and the school department, excluding the transportation, is at 53.5% of their budget. The city departments that are overbudgeted at this particular point are those items that are unique and not budgeted items that occur on a month-to-month basis. And the largest one that I can describe to you is city debt. So the majority of the city debt, principal and interest, is due in February of each year, and so as of March 31, we have paid all of our debt obligations for this fiscal year. And snow and ice is overbudgeted at this particular point at $524,000, and quite frankly, I don't expect any more snowstorms, so I think we should end our fiscal year at 524. That 524 will need to be raised on the recap in the next fiscal year, or we will bring to you a transfer prior to the end of the fiscal year. Normally, that transfer is voted by this council in the first meeting in July each year. The reserve funds represent both the stabilization funds and the free cash. Here is a summary of where we're projecting the balance to be. So as you recall, you budgeted or passed a budget that included budgeted resources in the FY '21 budget of $2 million. It was $2 million of one-time money we utilized to pass this past budget. We are hopeful, as we sit here tonight, that we will not need that $2 million to close -- sorry, hold on a second.
Don't hit restart.
To close, the gap, I don't believe we will need it for fiscal '21, but it was a budgeted source of monies into the '21 budget in order to have a balanced budget and a tax rate set last fall. In this coming budget, we are anticipating utilizing $1.6 million for capital items. As you know from a city council, there have been many years where the departments have requested capital items to be included in the annual budget, but each year, because of the limitations on the resources that we have, those capital items are generally stripped from the budget. This particular year, we are hopeful that we will get the support from this council to pass a budget that will include one-time money for these capital items, and that amount is $1,677,400. So as of right now, June, March 31, 2021, the balance in the stabilization is $9,265,044, but we're projecting a year-end balance at probably $7,587,644, because we are assuming we will not need that $2 million to balance the '21 budget. The GFOA and DOR recommend that 10% of our budget is included as a reserve account for our rainy day accounts, and you'll see that that amount, based on what we're projecting the fiscal '22 budget to be, a little over $300 million, would be $30 million. Our reserves right now are only at 1.9% of our budget, which is, quite frankly, significantly low. The reserve funds and the enterprise funds, the EMS enterprise fund has $2,628,368,000. The EMS department has been using their stabilization and free cash to reserve accounts to replace aging ambulances as they come due in terms of ambulances that come out of service. The water enterprise fund or reserves, so it's a combination of their stabilization fund as well as the free cash, they have a balance of $974,000. This council requested that a budgeted use be put into the FY '21 budget. That transfer has not yet been made, and Mr. Ferlin is anticipating using $329,000 in the FY '22 for rate reduction. So the projected balance as of the end of this fiscal year will be $744,851. The same is true with the sewer stabilization and free cash. The balance is $2,557,245 as of March 31, 2021. A budgeted use, which was recommended by this council, of $100,000 has not been yet transferred, and Mr. Ferlin is anticipating using $1,939,297 in the FY '22 budget for rate reduction as well, leaving a projected balance as of June 30, '21 of $717,948. The FY '22 general fund financial highlights, again, we begin with our budgeted assumptions. We utilize whatever estimated revenues that we may have, our estimated expenses, and then always do our long-range financial planning. Again, the charter requires us to provide you with a five-year forecast at the end or 180 days before the beginning of the fiscal year, so you received that document last late December, early January. Some of the assumptions that you will see in the FY '22 budget is the budget itself will be just over $300 million for revenues and expenses. The budget does not include the debt exclusion voted by the taxpayers for the high school. That amount is $4,489,089. At this particular point, we have gone long-term on $90 million. We bonded $60 million one year ago, and this past February went long-term for the second bond, so to speak, which was $30 million. At this particular point, we will not be borrowing for the remaining monies on the high school until the project is completed, which I believe is anticipated to be sometime this early fall or late summer, so I would anticipate having a closed-out amount somewhere around the time we go out for bonding again in February of '22. Our revenue sources in this particular budget that you will see in May, when you receive it, will include the revenue loss due to the pandemic as authorized by the American Rescue Plan Act. So the ARPA Act, as they're referring to it, has one of the use of funds components that will allow cities and towns to utilize any lost revenue due to the pandemic. And so what that means is we'll be looking at fiscal 2019, our last full fiscal year, comparing that to FY '21, and at that, '20 rather, and at that point, those amounts will be considered lost revenues. We do note here, or I do note here, that the guidance from the U.S. Treasury is not yet available, so we're looking at the language in the budget, in the bill itself. I mean, there is a possibility that when the clarification comes out, they may limit some of those items that are going to be included as lost revenue. In the budget, in terms of budget assumptions, the salaries and wages include, in the fiscal '22, are going to include filling vacancies that were eliminated in the '21 budget due to the uncertainties that existed then. The pandemic hit, as you know, we had a budget. The budget became really uncertain as to what the unrestricted state aid was going to be, and we needed to, by default, go to 112 budgets, which the city had never done in the past. And so, to be as prudent as possible, we eliminated almost all vacant positions in that '21 budget. Most of those departments are asking to refill those vacancies in the FY '22 budget, which is what you will be seeing in May when you receive your document. The expenses will include any operating needs of the departments, to include each department's needs. I know we spoke at length last week with regard to the park department, and we are hopefully going to be able to provide additional resources to that department to work on some of the park projects that should be included in the operating budget. And last, but certainly not least, the budget is committed to, and the administration is committed to, 100% of net school spending for the school department. Couple of other outstanding items that are important to this document. Annual employee contracts continue to be negotiated with the unions. Almost, I put all here, but almost all contracts will be expiring on June 30, 2021. Excluded, again, from this document is the high school debt. The unwritten policy of the city of Fall River for a number of years is that the debt that is incurred by the city continues to fund the operating budget at an amount not to exceed $10 million. And this budget, fiscal 2022 budget, will include general fund debt of principal and interest just under that $10 million mark. And again, the city continues to strive to include capital items within the budget for police, fire, facilities, and MIS, and those items will be included in this year's budget, and the use of funds will be the stabilization accounts. This is just a summary. Of course, it's a working document. The final budget will not necessarily be identical to what you're seeing here, but this is the presentation of the resources the city has available. The state aid, together with the real estate taxes, local receipts, and, as I indicated earlier, the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA Plan, for revenue losses is being currently calculated at $4,509,378. So that is what we're utilizing as resources within the fiscal '22 budget. On the expense side, presentation is the same as you normally see. It's broken down by category and function, and you can see what the original FY '21 budget, the budget that was revised, and what's being presented for the FY '22 budget, and where the increases are. For community maintenance in particular, the cost of trash in terms of the cost per ton is increasing in October, as well as the number of tons that we have been collecting over the last year with regard to the pandemic is significantly higher than it's been in the past. We may be able to utilize some of our CARES money for that increase, but that is still an unknown. The education is at 100% of net school spending, and the public safety is -- thanks, Leo -- filling all the vacant positions that existed in the past. So in the public safety aspect of it, that's shoring up the fire department back to the number of positions that they had in the past. It's 195 positions. And on the, on the police side, it is shoring up the vacant positions that have incurred in the past that, again, were cut from the prior year budget, thanks, Mark, that were cut from the prior year budget, bringing that full complement back to 235. Retirement is based on the assessment that is provided to us by PEREC, and that is the increases are. For community maintenance in particular, the cost of trash in terms of the cost per ton is increasing in October, as well as the number of tons that we have been collecting over the last year with regard to the pandemic is significantly higher than it's been in the past. We may be able to utilize some of CARES money for that increase, but that is still an unknown. The education is at 100% of net school spending, and the public safety is, thanks, Leo, filling all the vacant positions that existed in the past. So in the public safety aspect of it, that's shoring up the fire department back to the number of positions that they had in the past. It's 195 positions, and on the, on the police side, it is shoring up the vacant positions that have incurred in the past that, again, were cut from the prior year budget, bringing that full complement back to 235. Retirement is based on the assessment that is provided to us by PEREC, and that is making the assumption that we will be fully funded in the year 2035, which is five years earlier than what is required or can be utilized. I don't want to use the word required, but we can go out to 2040. And right now, we have a placeholder as a reserve account to account for all of these contracts that are currently unsettled. The 1.6 million that I spoke about in terms of the capital needs, this is breaking it down between the departments. You will see the Department of Community Maintenance is the department that will be asking for the most significant amount of that 1.6 million, followed by police and fire and buildings. Police is looking to continue to add mocked and unmarked cruises to their fleet of cars and retire some of the older vehicles. What's happening in the forecast, since, you know, we've certainly talked about this section of the charter and the purpose of this evening's meeting, so the next two slides really talk about FY22 and beyond. This slide was, and the next slide was provided to us by Senator Roderick's, so it's really showing us what, well, in the state resources, the comparison from '21 to '22, as well as the monies that are available for the federal resources. In a second, I will talk to you about the CARES money. That's the money, the initial money received, the $7.9 million, and we'll talk a little bit about the $73 million, but again, that guidance isn't currently available. And so, except for the specific language in the bill, we are really unable to speak to that at this particular point. And as the mayor said this evening, it's hopeful that we will put together a group to talk about where the best use of that $73 million is for the City of Floriver. On the school side, the only school slide I have in the deck, but I included this because it was provided to us by Senator Roderick's. You'll see on the school side, the increase in the Chapter 70 from '21 to '22, as well as the Ursa 1, 2, and 3 monies that are available to the school department for expenditure. The city side, the CARES money was the first amount of money that was awarded to us. It was 7,905,205, and that money was initially, needed to be spent by December of 2020. It has now been extended to utilize the useful benefit to December 31, 2021. At this particular point, the spending categories that we have utilized these monies in are included here on this particular screen. The couple that really need to be highlighted, in addition to the PPE that we've talked about, as well as the testing of the COVID-19 that we were able to do with the police department and the EMS department, is that we are going to be able to provide our employees with an upgraded MUNIS environment. We are going to go to the cloud for MUNIS, and the three-year subscription to go to the cloud is $1.7 million, and that has been determined to be an eligible expense under the CARES money. In addition, and that too will help both, it will help the school side as well as the city side, because we both share in the, in the MUNIS environment here at the city. In addition, health insurance claims that you see, that's the information that has been provided to us by Blue Cross Blue Shield, and that would represent the claims that have been incurred by our staff and our retirees that were, was COVID-related. So whether it was just a health appointment or a doctor's appointment, or whether it was somebody that was hospitalized, those costs were provided to us by Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they are considered eligible in this program. And the construction of the high school, the PPE was a cost that certainly wasn't budgeted in the original budget or the original project funding agreement for the high school, and so our CARES money is covering $522,853 worth of PPE for the high school. So as of March 31st, we have remaining 1.9 million. We have a number of projects that we are still working on with our department heads and with our grant writer and with A&amp;F in terms of making sure that they are eligible expenses under this program. So we are anticipating that we will spend down, hopefully, the remaining balance of these federal dollars. The American Rescue Plan Act, that money was just awarded to us from President Biden just signed this into law. This is going to cover the period from March 3, 2021, through December 31, 2024. Right now, as I indicated before, we have no real guidance on the specifics of this, but we do know at least what the bill says for purposes of the use of funds. So the first use of funds would be to respond to the emergency and address the economic needs of our businesses, our nonprofits, and our individuals. Item B in use of funds is to provide premium pay to essential employees of state and local governments, or make grants to employers of essential employees. Those premium pay amounts may not exceed $13 an hour or $25,000 per worker. And so for an example, in terms of lack of guidance at the moment, we don't know if that's $25,000 per year. Is it for the entire year? There's some literature out there that's indicating the employees deemed essential need to be working on site. There's some questions as to whether it includes anybody that was eligible for overtime versus staff that were not eligible for overtime, so there are a lot of unanswered questions with regard to B. C is the one we spoke about a little bit earlier, provide government services to the extent that any revenue reduction resulting from COVID-19. So again, fiscal '19 versus fiscal '20, so that's the $4.5 million that we are anticipating using as a resource in our FY22 budget. And item D is to make investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So here, again, water, sewer, well, we don't have broadband, but water, sewer, infrastructure, you know, one would assume that is going to also include all the streets and sidewalks that are related to the projects that would be included in this particular category. But again, until we are sure of what the guidance is and we meet together as a committee, we will certainly provide this council updated information as soon as we have some additional information. But in order to get started and be prepared for this, because, again, we want to be as shovel-ready as possible, we reached out to Mr. Ferlin, and we talked with him with regard to the possible water and sewer projects that he has and what the possible funding source, and "source" is spelled wrong, excuse me, I didn't prepare this, but that's good, I should have caught it, and what that possible funding source is. So here you see a number of sewer and water projects that Mr. Ferlin has in the timeframe that he has for the project to be started, and you can see that where it says open market, it would be likely that we could utilize this OPERA money, and the list goes on through two pages. Some of this, some of these projects, he is currently working with the state and, and with the federal government in order to have additional funding resources other than what we're talking here. Long-range planning, again, we continue to look at the five-year outlook. We continuously look at the current budget, the future budget, and then the five-year forecast. Certainly, this past year was completely unique and different than any other year, so the forecasting that we've provided you with a year ago in terms of the five-year plan and currently in terms of the five-year plan really has a lot of changes that have been occurring as these federal monies become available. And again, the CARES money is available to December 31, '21, and the OPERA money will be available to December 31, '24. The capital plan, as you know, we continue to work with our department heads on that, and our goal is always to eliminate any potential gaps and to provide this council with a balanced budget in May when we present, the mayor presents his budget. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Sahadi.
I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Thank you.
Certainly, I'm available.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a brief presentation from the superintendent and his finance team. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to speak?
Sure. Thank you, City Council, for having me here today, and thank you, of course, to the school committee. I'm going to turn the floor over to our CFO, Mr. Almeida, who will present a brief presentation to both committees in the spirit of teamwork on finances.
You don't have a PowerPoint, Mr. Almeida. You do? Do you have it on paper? I mean, do you have it only on paper?
Both.
Both, okay, then. Why don't you trade seats with Mrs. Sahadi, then?
She's on the low.
Oh, okay. We just want to try to, somebody's going to have to move, so.
You want to move? I'll move.
You can sit in my seat.
Mrs. Sahadi, Mrs. Sahadi, could we get your PowerPoint in hard form? Thanks.
Welcome, Mr. Almeida.
Thank you for having me.
You can get going, Mr. Almeida.
So, good evening, Mayor, City Council, School Committee. Thank you for having me here tonight. So just a quick presentation on the four public schools and the budget outlook over the last couple of years and looking at what FY22 has in store. So first, I want to start with the Student Opportunity Act. The Student Opportunity Act was signed into law in November of 2019. The Student Opportunity Act provides a major infusion of monies to the school department in areas such as special ed, low-income English-language learners, and employee healthcare costs. The Student Opportunity Act is to be funded over a seven-year period. This year is the first year, as it was not funded in this, in this past year. In particular, the low-income metric.
Mr. President, point of information, should we wait for the superintendent? I don't know where he went, but due to the, maybe if somebody could find out if he's still here, or, I'll let Ms. Almeida continue, if he can join us at the table when he has a chance. Ms. Almeida?
Sorry, it's bad.
Thank you. Mr. Almeida.
So in particular, the metric that we see the biggest increase in is the low-income metric, and that's where we will see a large infusion of cash over the next seven years to the schools. The next slide shows you the Chapter 70, and it provides you the history of Chapter 70 from 2018 through today. You can see that Chapter 70 has gone from 112 million in 2018 to 145,182,843 in the 2022 budget. That figure is reflective of an email we received from Senator Roderick's last week indicating that the Chapter 70 amount is $977,683 more than what was in the original governor's budget back in, back in January. This slide provides you with the required local contribution for the last several years. As you can see, for 2022, the figure is $34.2 million. That number represents an increase of just under $1.4 million. Over the last several years, you can see that number's ranged from $1.4 million to $1.7 million. The number for 2022 will be updated once the budget is finalized at the end of June, beginning of July, and I would expect that the figure is going to increase slightly because we are in an 80/20 district. The state, the state provides 80%, and the local contribution is about 20% to us. This slide provides you with what the net school spending has been from 2018 through 2022. You can see here that in 2022, the governor's budget provided for a net school spending budget of just, just under $179 million, $178,475,557. As you can see, over the, you know, once the Student Opportunity Act is fully funded, you can, you can see that this figure will be well over $200 million in fiscal year Next piece is just a quick discussion on the indirect cost agreement. Each, each city, town, along with schools, is required to, to have a document called the indirect cost agreement, which provides the cost allocation plan for the city and the town with schools, so that the school, school picks up the costs that the city incurs or that city departments and things like that that attribute to the school spending. And so that, those costs, those figures are all, not the figures, the costs, the costs are all broken out on the indirect, in the, in the indirect cost agreement, and provides an outline as to which costs are reported on the end of the year report. So this is just a quick rundown on the costs that are reported on the end of the year report, that eligible for net school spending. First, first cost is the per pupil administrative cost, which is essentially a cost per student, and it's a cost that is an average statewide that's reported on the DESC website, and for FY21, the number was just under $124 per student. In addition, the, we, we are charged for school snow expenses incurred by the city, a portion of the Fall of Retirement contributions for the school employees, health, life, dental insurance, a portion of legal expenses, property and liability insurance, and the assessments associated with special ed, school choice, and the charter schools. The following costs are, they have to be reported on the end of the year report, but they're not eligible for net school spending, and those costs are long-term debt, principal and interest, bond anticipation note interest, costs associated with crossing guards, the regional school assessments for Diamond and Brislaggy, purchase of land and buildings, and equipment over $150,000. The following slide is on transportation. This gives you a listing of what the past three years of transportation costs were. As you can see, the cost went from $9.4 million down to $7.5 million last year, and the reason the cost went down was due to the COVID-19 closure last year. And as you can see, the same thing has happened in 2021. To date, we've spent $4.5 million through yesterday, through yesterday. That decrease is also attributed to COVID, so. This slide provides you with the health insurance. I provided the health insurance costs to the operating, operating side for the schools, and the total has ranged from essentially 21, 20 million to 22 million. So it's been very stable over the last five years, and I anticipate that the cost is going to be very, very similar in FY21 as to, as to what it was in FY20. It's ranged from a drop in 2019 of about 5.7% to an increase in 2020 of 6.4%. MGL Chapter 71, Section 68 references the duties of the towns to maintain the schools to transport and transport children. I just provide this as reference tonight. Just, I'll read just the first sentence, it says, "Every town shall provide and maintain a sufficient number of schoolhouses, properly furnished and conveniently situated for the accommodation of all children therein." furnished and conveniently situated for the accommodation of all children therein entitled to attend the public schools." And as just a quick side note, over the last several years, the schools have funded $1.7 million in school building products and repairs to, you know, to offset some of those costs. Last night, thanks to the mayor and the city council for approving the... Back on April 6th, the city council approved the school appropriation transfer of $1,738,680 to meet our net school spending, our budgeted net school spending amount that we had submitted to the DESE. Last night, the school committee approved $1.7 million in spending. It's all spending on projects and facilities, equipment, and vehicles. In particular, the four big ones are the Talbot, its drainage in the parking lot that totals The second is the Pace Building for the new electrical service, which totals $329,000. The third is Henry Lord, and it's for the construction of the Egress Road, for $160,000. And the fourth is the Pace Building for the chiller installation, which is $145,000. Those items total $1.2 million. The additional items that I didn't include here, which are about $500,000, include items such as vehicles and major equipment that needed in the facilities department that were purchased, to include a high-roof fan, a low-roof fan, the... A vehicle for transportation to offset some of the costs in transportation, a compact loader, a mini excavator, and such. This slide provides you where we ended up with net school spending when we submitted the reports to the DESE. As you can see, we've been just around the 100% of net school spending, but I will say that it's been very... It's been a very cooperative arrangement over the last several years. We have worked very, very well with the city, and, you know, as soon as we received a letter from the DESE this year, Mary and I were on the phone immediately. We worked on getting that number resolved, and thank you to you and the mayor. We got that $1.7 million approved last month. Just a quick update on our ESER funds. So, this is just the breakdown of our ESER funding. We're getting three pots... It's three pots of money. This year, we have ESER I, which the initial funding was $4.7 million. We'll be applying for ESER II and ESER III funding for next fiscal year. ESER II is for $17.4 million. ESER III is for $41.3 million. Total ESER funding is $63.5 million. We estimate that out of the ESER balance, we'll have $2 million left over. Those funds will have to be spent by December 31st of next year. And so, to date, we've spent funds on the private schools, COVID rooms, technology, and projected to spend on the transportation. So, just a quick slide on the FY '22 budget that was approved last night. The budget that was approved last night was $121,638,499. That number was $926,000 over net school spending or 100.52 of the governor's budget. In addition, we submitted appropriation for transportation for $11 million. So, as I had mentioned in the beginning, there's a resolution on local aid, and that local aid figure now is $977,000. So, we believe that, you know, we are right around the ballpark for what was originally submitted. And with that... Any questions, please?
Thank you, Mr. Almeida. Before we entertain questions from both the school committee and the city council, mayor and I spoke yesterday, and we kind of agreed that instead of last year, whereas the council kind of dominated a two-hours' worth of conversations, and there really wasn't much deliberation on the school side, or a fair amount, if you just raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you when the time is right, if you want to speak at any point. Just raise your hand. Same thing for the city council, and I'll acknowledge the necessary representatives going back and forth. So, we're having a full debate. I want to just start the meeting, if I may, by kind of letting the school committee know, as well as the finance team, that I appreciate last night's meeting and the discussion that was had with respect to that $1.3 million. A lot of discussion was had with members of the school committee. I remember Mr. Corey taking the floor on that as well, speaking in partnership with the city. I appreciate those comments that were made, and I'm interested to see where the city is going in terms of their discussions with how we're going to be spending that $1.3 million. I've been advocating, from my perspective, publicly and privately, that I'm hoping that we can find some kind of a resolution, whereas the schools would be able to help pay for some of the debt payments on the school projects. I think this is a sign and a step in the right direction, showing that you are in partner with us in giving us that $1.3 million, so we'll offer the city a little bit more flexibility as we enter into next fiscal year. So, with that being said, I'll open up any questions that counselors have, but I also want to preface a couple of quick points, if I may. The first thing is, I'm sure we're going to speak on the Watson School at some point tonight. I'd be interested in hearing where that phase is at with Phase I and where you guys are going with Phase II, because I know that's been another contentious topic amongst the community. The other part is I'm interested in hearing, too, and I'm sure the council is as well, about where we are at with school capital projects. I know we have the baseball fields on the horizon, the Durfee football fields on the horizon. We're also seeing some discussions that I know the school committee's had regarding the Wiley renovation project, where you guys are at with that. So, I'm interested in seeing where that debate leads tonight. In addition, I'll just end by saying that I've stated before, when with the presentations with both the school and the city, it kind of shows that we're seeing some big money coming in from our federal government with regards to ESER money, as well as the American Rescue Plan and Stability Account. We're looking at $73 million coming in from the feds with respect to American Rescue, and we're seeing possibly with ESER II funds for the schools, as Mr. Almeida indicated, and ESER III, $17 million and another $41 million. I've stated to the mayor, Mrs. Sahadi, and the finance team that I am hoping that a discussion is being had, and I know it is, with seeing how we could utilize these funds to avoid going to the debt exclusion. And I'm hoping that you see some guidance very soon from the federal government and the U.S. Treasury on how we can spend this money. And I know the mayor is working very hard to try to make that happen, speaking to the federal delegation, but I am going to be strongly advocating, from my perspective, to see what we can do without going to the debt exclusion. And I know we're not seeing in this fiscal year's budget or next year, but it's coming. And while we're seeing this big, big amounts of money, I'm hoping that we could send some relief to our taxpayers. So, with that, we'll see where the debate goes. I do have some follow-up questions, but I'm interested in hearing if any counselors or school committee members would like to speak, asking the respective administrations Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
I didn't expect to be first. Usually, everyone's got their hands like, you know, like we're at a concert usually when everyone's talking, but I guess I'm the first person today. One of the things that I have a question about, and I looked in, you know... I'm looking at the munis. I'm looking at some older information, because we don't have any updated munis information yet coming down the line. The CSO charge, the CSO funding that you have in here, it says around $300,000 here. And I'm curious, as most taxpayers are, because that's one of the biggest costs, rainwater tax, things like that. Is that an accumulative from all the schools and all the school departments? When rain... When we're collecting rainwater and paying a fee, it accumulates to about $300,000?
Yes, typically.
Okay.
This year, it's slightly less this year, but it is about $300,000.
Now, how is that measured? And is that something that would... A taxpayer just randomly would be able to see, or is that something that they would have to request from you or someone else to see how that's measured, and from school to school, from property to property, and things like that?
That would have to come directly from the water and sewer.
Water and sewer. And I guess my also... Another one of my concerns is if it's about $300,000 on the budget, technically, that means that taxpayer is covering that cost. So, a property owner or a school owner or a person who owns a store or things like that, they're already paying a rainwater tax on their property, and they're also going to have to pay for the school as well. Is that basically what it is?
It really is generating a revenue source for the city.
To pay off...
So, we're paying for an expenditure through our budget, but creating a revenue source on... In your sewer account, correct?
That's correct. So, Counselor, all the departments that have CSO charges would be paying the sewer department, and the sewer department would be including that as a revenue source before it calculates its rates.
All right. Now, and I needed to know that. I think the public needed to know that, too. I think, because, you know, we field these questions all the time, and I think we're trying... I'm trying to connect the dots, just for not only myself, but for the people who are listening and want to know these things. So, now going to you with the CSO question, Mrs. Sahadi. We're going to receive some infrastructure money for sewer, and is that something that can be used to offset CSO costs that we have to deal with year to year as well?
It would be used to offset future projects, so it will not be available to utilize for past debt. So, we will not be able to pay principal and interest payments on past debt. We will be able to, which was why Mr. Furlan presented the schedule of projects he has on the horizon. We will be able to utilize it for projects he has coming up, and therefore, we would not have to borrow for those projects.
Now, I know that you're slightly busy from day to day, and I know you have a lot of requests, and you're probably going to get a lot of requests in general, but I think I would like to know, and I think maybe some others would like to know, how much water, rainwater usage is occurring on the schools, just so they can see how much is being transferred to the city costs as well, or I should say, offsetting the cost for the city as well, if that's doable.
Certainly, I will meet with Mr. Furlan and provide you with a list of the properties and the cost per property in terms of the CSO charge.
Thank you. In the munis, I looked at legal costs, and again, this is a little bit about a year ago or so, fiscal year ago. At one line, it's about 142% increase in legal costs, and I know that it'll vary from year to year. But what would cause or what has caused an increase in legal costs for the school department?
So, last year, we had a major settlement that we typically don't see, that we had to pay for. So, that's what caused...
We can't go into the details of that?
I'd rather not talk about the case, so...
That's understandable. I just wanted to make sure that people know we're going to... What we likely won't see that increase in the next fiscal year, correct? Okay. And again, I know you can't go into the details of that specific one, but in general, what would a legal... What do legal fees usually pertain?
Well, Counselor, he can speak to the amount of the legal fees. He doesn't have to necessarily get into the case, so I believe Counselor Lee might want to know what the amount was.
That's fine, yeah. Great.
So, this... So, we have... Typically, on an annual basis, we pay for... Mr. Assad, he's our attorney for the school committee. In addition, we pay Nuttall, McAvoy, and Joyce, which represents our student services/spread legal needs that we have. And in addition to that, we pay any settlement that may or may not come up. And so, on a yearly basis, I would say it depends.
And how do you budget for that? Because it's such a variable.
So, we look at the last several years and use that, you know, say, four or five years.
Just average it out.
And use that as an average to figure that out.
Okay.
Like I said, last year was a little in ordinary. It was a little higher than normal because of a large settlement.
There is some spending going on here in regards to the general education supplies. I just wrote the line item numbers down from the munis, 558-600 and 551,000. I know you know these by heart. So, and they just basically talk about supplies, and I'm just curious as to what's the difference between general education supplies and just regular supplies that are in that budget?
So, 551,200 is typically our textbook slash technology material purchases. And included in that is typically things like, for example, last night, we just approved Imagine Learning, which is a program that we're going to use with our ELLE population. That was a big expenditure that we had this year. In addition, last night, we... The school committee approved a contract for about $700,000 to finish. We had started a curriculum rollout last year, and with last night's approval, we can finish the pre-K all the way, pre-K and from 3 to 5 for our Wonders English program that we have over at all the elementary schools. So, those, you know, are typically the things that are paid out of the 551,2 account. The 558,6 account that you referenced is typically like classroom materials and that kind of stuff.
And that varies from year to year, too?
It does.
Okay.
It does. It's all determining on, you know, what type of programs and things everybody wants to roll out. This year, we've seen, just in supplies in general, we've seen a major increase with COVID.
Yeah.
Buying all the PPE and everything else that we talked about.
You didn't really see... I mean, I know we had some offset costs based on transportation, because we didn't have to do as much transporting during COVID, but I didn't see a general decrease overall in spending. You were still actively trying to educate students for the most part, I would assume.
Well, so, it's kind of... I hate to say it's a give and take.
Yeah.
And what I mean is, we have to spend to the law.
Right.
So, whatever the net school spending obligation is, you know, on a yearly basis, we have to spend. This year, I'll say it, has been a strange year. It's been a very, very strange year. We've had a lot of openings and positions this year. We've had a lot of things that have caused line items to have balances in them.
Fluctuate.
And so, the only way to spend the budget is to, you know, spend it in other line items and to make things available to students, make things available to classrooms, so...
You have to spend by law.
And by law, we have to spend that amount.
And we're not able to offset it to, you know, decrease the cost on taxpayer. It has to be spent. So, sometimes the system is what it is.
Well, and if we don't spend it, you know, if we get into the 98% percentile, 97% percentile, which is money the city has to continue to make up from year to year. So, you know, we, you know, as best as I can, I try to, you know, we try to spend every single dollar so that nothing return... It's not to say we don't want to return money to the city, but so that we can meet that requirement.
There are a lot of taxpayers in the city that pay into this that don't have an investment, personal investment in the school department, right? I mean, a lot of taxpayers. So, they want to see school performance. They want to see their tax dollars being spent in a way that's going to improve things for their community, right? Everyone cares about kids, all that kind of stuff.
And I will say, you know, specifically, over the last two years, we've put a lot of investments into the classrooms, and we've purchased a lot of curriculum materials and a lot of technology, hopefully, to support students.
We have increases on every single page of the PowerPoint you gave us. There's an increase, right? And so, it becomes a conversation that a lot of taxpayers have with me personally, but also, I think, in general, where... I think they need to see a side-by-side, right? So, you put the pay per pupil, you know, administrative cost per pupil, they've increased year to year?
It goes up by usually about 2%. 2% to 3%.
And we're going to get a lot of increases. We're going to get a lot of increases based on COVID and other things coming our way, different acts coming down the line. And I think that we need to see, and not just... I'm not talking about the city council as a body. I think the community as a general needs to see if these increases are resulting in better school performances before and after. You know what I mean? Not just verbal and not just verbiage or, you know, whatever you want to call it, not just rhetoric, I guess you could say, but actual tangible results of before and after. Is the increased spending... Is there a correlation, direct correlation, between increased spending and performance at schools? You know? I think it's something that the people need to see. So, I don't know where or how, or even... You probably do have these measures somewhere, but I don't necessarily need to see it right here on the floor, but I think that the public definitely needs to see that, because general consensus from, again, people out there that do have to pay into these programs and do have to pay into these taxes and everything else, they need to see that there's a performance increase, too, as well, you know? And I would like to see it myself, but I'm a million times true percent that the rest of the community wants to see that as well. I had more questions. I really hope that some of my colleagues have more to say, but I don't really have much to add to this. I hope there's some more coming. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, just want to draw Counselor Lee's attention to... So, the state holds every community in Massachusetts accountable through the Accountability Act of... Ed Reform Act of '93 and upgraded in 2011. You can go on the webpage and see every community's accountability. So, we're actively measured for performance based on dollars invested. There are only three communities in Massachusetts funded at or below 100% of net school spending. Fall River is one of them. Chapter 70, the state law... Chapter seventy, the state law, requires a certain amount of expenditure each year. That is the. As old as the Mayflower Compact, if you will. That's the general covenant of government, a public duty to fund their schools. They set a target. They then hold us accountable for achieving certain measurements and metrics and, and, uh, uh, improved performance. So you can see all that up both on the state department's webpage and us. The school committee, that is the governance authority. Ensures that every dollar that we spend is being.
Accounted for.
Invested and accounted, uh, uh, as measured and what's the impact in the classroom. And that's how they've been making decisions here. Uh, for the last several years. So granted, we're improvement oriented and focused on, uh, ensuring that the public trust in every dollar. Uh, is expended in a way that has a value add for students. So if it's, if it's touching the classroom. That's the most important thing for us is that how do we improve? So all those expenses that, that you've, that Kevin talked about how this has been an interesting year. Not only the COVID related expenses, but you know, the multiple millions of dollars that we've invested in technology. I mean, we've been open since the beginning. Uh, of the school year. We never closed for longer than a day or two. Uh, we've always served our highest needs kids through this entire pandemic. Coupled with all of the PPE that we need to do that, plus Ken and his team and all the construction that we did to make sure our schools are safe. So all those dollars that the school committee has afforded have all been invested in improving the school department. Unfortunately. The measurements that we have to share with you this year aren't the summative that we've always used statewide because there was no assessments last year.
COVID asterisk, right?
There you go.
Yeah.
So, but we have formative assessments that we can show you. And the worst part is that the, the crisis hit when we were really coming out, like attendance was improved over the last ten years. Uh, this past year before the, you know, that was something that we were really proud of, student attendance. Uh, we've increased, uh, our student attendance and decreased. Uh, dropout rates and those kinds of things, but then boom, the, uh, you know, the way that things are measured, uh, put a, a damper in our progress. So we're gonna be able to get back at that this coming year with the, uh, how the state's holding us accountable. So we'll continue to share.
I can only speak from, I'm sorry if I stubbed the floor.
You still do.
So I, I can only speak from what I see. And I'm not gonna assume that my opinion and what I see in my circle of the world is what everyone sees, right? But I can only give you that confidence, parental confidence, confidence from individuals in the, in the community that pay tax, that pay into these. Millions and millions of dollars. I think confidence is waning from my perspective. You can have a different perspective. I know many of you probably do. Um, so when we sit here and we have to increase everything, we're gonna be talking about water rates soon, I'm sure, and everything. We have to, we have to speak to the people who put us in these chairs, and I know that you do too, you know? So I, I want to make sure that if people are seeing this increase from every level, that we're getting money. Coming in, that there's a benefit to it, not just from their pockets, but also from the classroom as well. So if there is any kind of way to tangibly, for the regular everyday average Joe or Jane to see. How much spending we're doing and what the improvements are from that spending. Same as I asked you, when, when, when we, when we see a budget. That's gonna be reaching close to three hundred million dollars and an increase from probably what, two seventy, two seventy-five from the previous year or so, I'm estimating. Are the roads better? Are the, are the buildings looking better? Like, we need to know, we need to see something tangible. So that way we, we can justify saying yes to all these increases that are coming down this way.
You, you can respond, Mister.
I just want to be very clear. I'll say this again to you. That's great, but don't forget that we're funded.
Came off of everything.
At the bare minimum required under law. And we've done the very best we can over the last twenty years to improve student achievement in this district. I think the confidence you can see is. Read the front page of the Herald News today about the high quality colleges that our seniors have gotten into. You look at these other communities, I don't know, Secoq, let's say. What are they funding? One hundred and forty-six percent of net school spending? I mean, we're at a hundred. So we've done the very best we can with the dollars that we have. Our teachers have been absolutely, uh, stalwarts of honor. Uh, throughout this process. Our administrative team has been exceptional in the delivery. Our schools are safe. They're cared for. We've put more investments in capital projects over the last five years than we've ever done, uh, in the history of the city in such a short period of time. So. That confidence that you talk about, people can vote with their feet. Yes, there are other options for parents to choose from if they so choose. But we know that our product and our option is the number one choice for the majority of parents in this community.
And I understand that if I was in your position, I would be promoting all the positivity I could without recognizing that there have been negative. News articles about treatments of certain things in the school department as well. And, and I'm, I'm, I don't think this is what we're here to talk about. So I, I apologize for bringing, bringing us into that realm a little bit, but I do think in general that when tax dollars come down the line. People want to see positive results. I think that's ultimately what they want to see. And, and I, and I think school performance, like for example, we're at a hundred and twenty-three. You said a hundred and twenty-three per pupil, correct? A hundred and twenty-three?
That, that's the cost that we, we charge, um, that we, we get charged for, for the city.
Administrative cost.
Cost, yeah.
So where does that rank in the state overall in comparison to performance?
It's a DESE requirement.
DESE requirement, okay.
So it would be the same amount for any school district.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. I, I yield on the, I, I yield the floor again. I apologize.
I, I, I kind of want to go back to that if, if I may, because I don't want to overlook your, your point, councillor Ali. I think what the council is trying to say, and correct me if I'm wrong councillor Ali, is the school department has seen since two thousand nineteen. You know, seven, a six point four million dollar, a six point four percent increase of seven million dollars from FY nineteen, from eighteen to nineteen. We've seen an eleven million dollar increase, um, in chapter seventy, which we all pay state taxes onto. So you're, you're obviously okay to ask these questions. Uh, in two thousand twenty-one, we're looking at six million and in two thousand twenty-two, in the governor's budget, looking at seven point one million. So. I guess, Mister Superintendent, councillor Ali probably would like to know, with the increases that you are seeing in chapter seventy. What kind of tangible evidence have you seen when it comes to testing, when it comes to student performance, when it comes to student engagement? Those kind of things.
Okay, great question.
Am I correct councillor Ali?
I think that.
Hundred percent.
I think that you have to step back and understand that the Student Opportunity Act, which. School committee member Corey and other members in our union leadership were instrumental in achieving for the entire state. Has just been implemented in this budget. So we're not getting any extra dollars. Each increase that we talk about is the minimum under the law. We have to be clear about that. So it's not like, hey, there's extra money, you guys are not spending it wisely. We are held accountable by the department for planning around how we invest those dollars. Our Student Opportunity Act plan was, uh. Uh, heralded, uh, as a wonderful plan that invests in the right stuff, early childhood, English language learners, special ed. Uh, and they're holding us accountable for doing that. As I said, uh, when these new, uh, assessment measures come back into play. Maybe this coming year, uh, I think we're gonna be able to, to really show you a, uh, an analysis that would, uh. And I can give you analysis of the past couple of years to show you what we're doing. We, you know, we, we share student achievement each year. We share achievement at the end of the year when, or in the fall when the results come back, we do a big data presentation each year. I can share that with the committee. But we also, through the budget process, we show, hey, this is what the data shows. This is why I'm suggesting that the school committee approve. Uh, these expenditures in these areas because we target, uh, you know, improvement constantly. So, uh, I think we're all. On the same page when it comes to, we gotta do better. We always have to do better. We have to, uh, be, uh, more welcoming. We have to. Engage all the families of the students, uh, that we serve. We have to ensure that I have the right programming for any need that comes into our city. We educate every child that shows up at our door. We're the only place, uh, the public school systems and all the communities are the only places in. State government that actually do that. Every single child that shows up, it's our responsibility. We don't cherry pick. We don't pick based on. On, on scores or behavior or attendance. We serve every child that stands in front of us. We serve them and their families. Provide all of those types of services in a wraparound environment. We're committed to improvement. And you can guarantee that every dollar this school committee spends will be invested in classrooms to better meet the needs of kids.
Thank you, Mister Superintendent. Mister Corey?
Yeah, Mister Lee, I, I thank you very much, Mister President. Thank you, Mister Lee, for your inquiry and, uh, I understand your position.
I'm still new at this, so yeah, you gotta bear with me a little bit too.
I understand your, uh, position as a city councillor and the questions you must get from your, from your constituency. Um, I would invite you to come with me on, on any given day, on the many times that I venture into the schools to see what's going on. And I, I would love it if you accompanied me someday and I, I could, you know, tangibly show you, you know, some of the work that's going on that would. Really enlighten, you know, your response to maybe some of these taxpayers who live in our city, uh, which is a very important thing to do. Uh, we're constantly in schools, seeing what's going on, meeting all of our staff, um, building up their morale, keeping them on point. But the thing is, is that Fall River has an endemic problem and it's called transients. And because of transients and because we're a public school and not a parochial school or a charter school where there's more retention. And more stability in their demographics, our demographics represent transients. So there's a constant change. And those numbers really affect our intellectual progress and academic growth. But as you well know, and I'm so proud of you because you just had a chance to speak at, at the school you earned your masters at, right? And that must have been a wonderful thing for you, but you know the price of an education is extremely expensive. So now let me get to the new high school, which I know is a big price tag, but. The one thing that I, I really want taxpayers to understand about the high school and the cost of the high school to the city. Is that the high school's gonna be an economic generator for many, many years to come. It's gonna train our young people. And we've increased our chapter four, our, our chapter seventy-four spending. So we're entering a partnership now with Diamond. For RPA and Durfee to get kids in our city, our demographics, okay? More hands-on as well as college prepared. So we're meeting the demands of the twenty-first century and none of that is cheap. It all comes at a cost, you know? And, and I look at our costs, as you say, they spiral upward. Education has a tendency to do that across the board in many communities. Throughout our commonwealth. It just seems to be the spiral. Look at transportation. Just two years ago, it was nine and a half million. Now it's eleven million, you know? It's crazy. How do we lower that? You know, we're dealing with private contracts, so there's, uh, so many variables to consider. But I can assure you, uh, councillor Lee, um, that there's a lot of growth going on, both intellectual and tangible. If you could see the infrastructure just at Watson alone, if you could see the changes to the parking lot at Talbot. And the new basketball court that, that the kids had a chance to paint and, and all of the general infrastructure that we're, we're constantly douled with. That we have to keep up to and the new equipment we have to constantly refurbish or buy again. It's, it's, it's an amazing amount of money. So it takes a lot of money to run, uh, a community educationally. I appreciate the support of the council. I know that we're doing our very best to control our costs on our side, even though, as you know, those costs continues to spiral upward. It's just the, the name of the game as far as I can see. Thank you. I yield.
Thank, thank you, school committee man Corey. Uh, school committee man Aggyar.
So thank you, uh, Mister President. Just had a, a couple of questions. I want to try to be targeted. We have a lot of people and I'm sure a lot of people have, uh, questions to ask. To councillor Lee's point about the public, I think we really, across the whole, the whole city, we need to understand how education's funded. The administrative team explained that as well, that over the years, we were never even at a hundred percent. So we used to come down here and fight to just get to the hundred percent. Thankfully, as the council president indicated, over the last five years, we've received forty million dollars of additional funds. Now, at the same time as that's happening, a logical question would be for anybody, what is the results of that? So for those five years, quite frankly, I think our achievement has been flat. We still have a lot of work to do and I don't think anybody would deny that. But over five years, you have to wonder like, what, what's, are we gonna hold anybody accountable to this? Has nothing to do with the money. Because you have to spend the money no matter what. But what the school committee's charged with is evaluating the superintendent based on. The, the scores and the achievement. You know, we've had COVID and this year wasn't, you know, the scores weren't available. But over the four years, for this kind of money, we have been flat. There's pockets of excellence. There's a lot of good things, but we need to put it all together. So I think the public needs to know, I've seen a lot of comments about the school department's hiring seventy-two more people, fifty people, eighty people, all this stuff. It seems like a lot, but when I tell you add up eight million dollars. That you're gonna hire a lot of people. We have to hire a lot of people to make that number. It's not that we're hiring people to do nothing. There's people working. Harder than they've ever worked in their careers. If you look at this counseling over this five years. You would be astonished to know how many councils we have now versus then. Those are direct services to kids and we could go on and on, but. The schools are doing, I think, the, the best we can to spend the money that we have to spend. We have to spend that money. So I want to make sure people know that that's the case. I would ask the school administration to, to maybe send some periodic updates that we get to the full council because I think you could get, you could glean some information on that. The capital projects that Mister Pacico and the superintendent were talking about. If you see some of those things, you would see it for yourself. So. I do think that we're, we're, I think, good stewards of the money, but right now, we have a lot of resources in the school department. Whether we're one of the only three schools at just about a hundred percent. The city of Fall River, when you take into the whole mix of money, is one of the lowest, the city doesn't have any money. So the schools have more money, the city doesn't have enough. And I think we need to partner and that was what I think we did last night. I had a question on that. The three hundred million dollars, Mrs. Ahadi, that when you said the budget was three hundred million, does that include the schools or is that just the city?
No, it includes schools.
Includes schools. So when I look at that, I think it should be separate. So the piece of the funding, we, we have to pay a hundred percent anyway by the, by. Um, when you look at how much the percentage of the reserves were, I think a more accurate reflection would be only on the city side because. Adding the schools in that has to get funded by the state and the city anyway, I'm not so sure why, you know, it's truth in advertising that the city budget. Although technically it's three hundred million, I don't think the schools should be included in that.
One of the reasons it needs to be included is when we look at the GFOA and we look at bond council and we go out for bonding. Um, all of the debt, including the school debt, is included in the calculations. So when we look at what we have reserves. We have to look at the total, um, school and city department appropriations.
But, but we, you're saying that the city, you have to spend that money every year?
I understand you have to spend it.
So there should be no.
But when we're looking at it, we don't have significant reserves set aside if anything were to happen to basically pay that debt. And the debt is significantly school department debt.
But how is it debt, how is it debt if it's, if it's, if it's chapter seventy money?
Well, we're not talking about chapter seventy money. You're talking about the total budget, the three hundred million. We're not talking about the, the.
Right.
Resources, the revenue that we're receiving. That's the chapter seventy money. We're looking at the budget, the budgeted expenditures.
So how much of that three hundred million is chapter seventy? When you say three hundred million?
Well, when we're looking at the revenue source, um, whatever, what was the number, hundred and forty-five million is, is a revenue source from the state.
Year on year.
Actually, it's less than that because it's really a hundred and twenty million or so because you've got to net out the charter school assessment. Which has been somewhere around twenty-four million dollars.
Yeah. But I don't, I just, and it's just my, it could be just me, but I don't think it's, it's truth in advertising and saying that it, it's, that money's gonna be paid year in and year out. So I think the city side should be the focus more so than the school side, just my opinion. I think one of the pieces of the debt service we talked about, I think I saw up there four point five million for the Durfee. Debt exclusion, that was either not included or I guess there's a bill, but it's not going to the debt exclusion. What's the status of that?
So the four point five million dollars is the sum of the principal and interest and short-term debt that will be due on Durfee for fiscal two thousand twenty-two. We are not adding, although the voters voted to add that debt exclusion to the tax bills, we will not be adding that to the burden of the taxpayers in fiscal twenty-two.
When did they vote, when did they vote to put that in FY twenty-two?
I didn't say they voted to put it in FY twenty-two. They voted to put it in when the vote occurred. So quite frankly, bond council is surprised that we haven't added it to the tax bills at this particular point in time.
Yeah. So when, when, when we went out to try to ask the taxpayers for the, the vote for the school, we kept on looking at a sheet like this. That talked about how much debt was gonna be for the high school and when. And by, I'm looking at it, it says in two thousand twenty-two. Doesn't say anything. It says one point five million in estimated interest on short-term borrowing. The total debt service was nine point four million.
So a lot of things have happened since then. The interest rates were significantly low in the last couple of years. And so because they were significantly low, the most prudent thing to do. Would be to go long-term on some of those projects. So, um, we initially went long-term for sixty million dollars of the project, um, a year ago. So in fiscal twenty or in February of two thousand twenty, we borrowed sixty million. So in fiscal '20 or in February of 2020, we borrowed $60 million long-term, which we now have principal and interest payments due on. And this past year, again, the rates were significantly lower than they've ever been in the history of Fall River in terms of paying for debt. And so we borrowed another $30 million long-term. When that particular presentation was put together back when we were going to the voters, we had no idea that the interest rates were going to drop the way they've dropped, right? So the interest rates have dropped significantly and so it would only be prudent for the city to go out and borrow long-term on this project as parts of the project were completed. So
And how much does that count?
Please?
How much money is that per year?
Well, it's going to be 4.5 million dollars in the next fiscal year.
So, so my point is, when we went out to the voters, we didn't tell them that you were going to, we were going to, somebody was going to make a decision, yourself, the city, mayor, whoever, that we were going to add 4.5 million dollars, whether it was a good deal or not relative to the interest rates. That in FY '22, we were going to spend another $4.5 million in debt service. Right now, this, this sheet said 9.4 million, which is under the 10 that you suggested. So we go out 4 million in '22 for, a year earlier than we needed to, according to this sheet. Then next year, I guess it's no longer 3.5 for the debt exclusion, it's now 4.4?
It'll be a little bit higher than that as well. It'll be what the principal and interest is due on the debt for the next fiscal year.
Add another million, add another million to what we told, what we told the voters when we went out for this to say, the anticipated debt exclusion share was 3.6, now it's going to be 4.5. So now that's adding another million to that, to that decision. I think we need to, as a city, and the purpose of this meeting is to talk about these things, is to, we need to find a way to lower that number so that the city can actually survive in their budget. Because we're adding, just by what we just said there, millions of dollars that we don't have, that people don't have it. And it, we're doing it early, I, I wouldn't have agreed to it in my mind, but I also wasn't part of that discussion. But I can certainly know that when I went around with the mayor and other people to try to get people to vote for it, this is the chart that was used, this is the chart that was in public, this is the chart that we talked about. So now we're saying, well, because of good rates, we're going to bank $5 million or $4.5 million that we didn't have. And everything else I'm hearing is we don't have the money. So I think that that's something that the council should look at and I think we need to really talk about it. If the schools can help, I as one member would be more than willing to try to say, let's try to figure out a way to help. But it's frustrating when you look at it and say, well, we're going to pay the debt exclusion and it's, you know, we're doing it earlier than we, we really need it to and I don't think that we have the money necessarily to do that. The other issues, I know one of the issues that we talked about was trying to save the city money at the last meeting, which was almost a year ago. We talked about the trash issue in the city and we talked about the savings that the city could get from the trash. Here we are in May and I haven't heard one thing about the trash or making any decisions to try to reduce that cost. We just saw a slide that said the trash is going to go up. How is that possible after the, after the time that we sat here last year to make a decision on that? We're giving away, we're giving stuff that shouldn't be, we have other things that councilors have brought up at meetings, we, we, it just keeps on going up and there's no action to say we're going to stop it. I think we need to look at all of these items because you people are stuck with the school budget is going to be what it's going to be, as I said before. You have to focus on this, this stuff in the city and if there's any help that, as far as me as one member, I'm more than willing to help, just like we did last night related to the vote. And I do appreciate your support and if you ever need anything, please feel free to reach out. With that, I yield.
Mrs. Sahadi, as a follow-up before I acknowledge other councilors, to Mr. Aguirre's point. So could you, could you elaborate a little bit more because that could be confusing to some people who are at home? So in, in, in the discussions that we had, when there were presentations were made for support for the city council to approve the, this going out to the voters for the debt exclusion, a presentation was made by the then-city administrator and yourself and the mayor at the time, that there was going to be an appropriation out of our general fund in the amount of, I believe it was 2.7 or 2.4 million dollars that would make, take effect in FY '23. I believe that's the chart that School Committee Man Aguirre is referencing. That was going to run us to payments that will go all the way to FY '37. So I guess you're indicating that that payment now is going to be in the, in the numbers of 4 million plus to pay for the debt exclusion in FY '22. So I, I, I'm struggling to understand what went into the discussion to increase the payments in FY '22, '23 and '24 to go long-term. I'm not following why we would do that. I understand interest rates are where they're at, but why double the payments now when we didn't need to?
Well, we're not doubling the payments, counselor. So what happens with the bond market is we go to bond council and we have a financial advisor who looks at our debt and looks at what we have for the overall debt and determines whether it makes more sense to have even payments on a given year or to have payments based on, the interest based on the principal of the given year. So whether we have a payment that is, a payment that is decreasing over a number of years or a payment that is the same payment each year, that's looked at together with our financial advisor for Southwest, together with bond council and myself and the finance team, or in the past, the administrator. We look at that and we look at what is in the best interest of the city in terms of repayment of any debt. So whether we're looking at the debt that relates to the Durfee building, as we're currently talking about, the high school, or whether we're looking at any of the other debt that this committee has approved. That particular schedule was prepared, I believe, by First Southwest back when it was, it was done. The interest rates were higher. We were looking at going short-term for a longer period of time for which it made no sense based on what the current interest rates are. So we would not have had a principal payment at this particular point in time and we may not have one for another couple of years based on that schedule. The other thing that is true, and, and I would have to go back and look at the details, but looking at what we have left to pay off on some of our current debt and what we've currently borrowed, that 2037 date may no longer exist as well. I mean, that was all an estimate. It was not written in stone, it was all an estimate based on a project that was $268 million with approximately, and I don't remember now, 50 some odd percent paid for by the taxpayers of this community. So yes, it was an estimate, yes, it was utilized in presentations, but it was just that, it was an estimate. And I believe if you go back and you seek votes of mine, it was clearly, in, in a lot of the presentations indicated that it was an estimate at that particular point in time. It did not make any sense not to borrow the $60 million at less than a 1% rate and then the $30 million that we borrowed this past year at less than a 1% rate. I just indicated to you that this is the lowest rate the city's ever paid on any debt. So I do appreciate the conversation here this evening and I do appreciate the worksheet that existed back a number of years ago when several of you spoke with taxpayers. But it is a vote of the taxpayers and it is a debt exclusion and for that, they're getting a brand-new, state-of-the-art high school. And whether or not that debt exclusion is added to the bills in 2019 when it was first, when the first amount of debt, or 2020, when the first amount of debt was bonded, or whether it gets added to the tax bills in 2023, it is still a responsibility of the taxpayers of this community for the vote they took as it relates to the new high school. And again, I, no, no disrespect, I was certainly part of the presentations. However, it was an estimate at that particular time and it was based on the progress of the high school as well. I believe at one point in time, the initial indication was the high school wasn't going to be completed until fiscal '22. That plays a very important part on when you borrow the, the monies. Now the high school is being completed by, well, initially May of 2021 and now the fall or the, or the summer of 2021. That too plays a part on when we need to borrow in order to make the payments to our contractors. And, and, and quite frankly, I'm very proud of the way we've made the payments to the contractors, with the exception of one particular month, which, which was really the contractor that didn't, didn't submit their invoices timely. Every single month, Suffolk Construction and their vendors are being paid timely. Tammy and Chris Gallagher in the Building Department has done an awesome job in making sure that everything gets processed through MSBA and everything is paid timely. By paying everything timely, we do need to have the cash in the bank.
I, I, I get that, Mrs. Sahadi. I just, I guess the question was raised, there was a cost to going long-term in this year's budget, which wasn't originally forecasted. I get there was projections, I just wanted to clarify the point because there was a cost to going long-term, whether it's with the reduction of rate or increasing the principal payments a little further along than we generally would have originally projected. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. No disrespect, we were just trying to find out why there was a cost increase when the projections that we all campaigned on to try to get that school pass have since changed. So that's, that's where we're at. And I, I'm going to still maintain the belief that we have American Rescue money that we need to use, working with some of the ESTR funds that the schools have, to see if we can eliminate even having a discussion about going to the debt exclusion, respectfully. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Am I correct in, it was a school committee meeting, it was quite some time ago, but that the enrollment for '22 is down by over 200 students?
Yes, the enrollment is down and that is a major issue with across the Commonwealth this year, 30, where the Commonwealth is down 36,000 students, as families that kept children at home, particularly a kindergarten, which is not mandated under law to attend.
Okay, and now, so that obviously has an impact on the overall budget for net school spending?
It's about $3 million less than we were anticipating.
Okay. Have you, has your budget been set as if that, that the enrollment wasn't affected? How are you, how are you handling that within the budget?
So each year, the state sets a chapter 70 on something known as the October 1 count for enrollment. So the governor's number and the House and Senate Joint Committee Ways and Means both funded all the communities in Massachusetts at the October 20 numbers, which again is the 36,000 students less. For us, it's about $3 million. Our position and the advocacy that's happening in the state is that they'll change that and fund us at the October 19 enrollment numbers because all those kids will be here on September 1. That's a fact. And as we've seen, it wasn't that Catholic school enrollment went up or charter went up or it, so these kids have been kept home mostly at that age level. They'll be back with us this coming year. We've averaged around 900 and, 970 kids in kindergarten and first grade over the last several years. So it's a down year. We are only funded at the actual count. So our budget is $3 million less than we were anticipating.
Okay, so in the event that the enrollment does go up, then the funding will go up with it?
Only in the following year.
Right.
So it will be captured on October 1. Now, the state, House and Senate, led by our own Senator Roderick, does a great job. They established something called a reserve fund, they've put $40 million in it to address needs across the Commonwealth. The true cost of the 36,000 is probably somewhere close to a $175 million. So this won't fill any real holes, but it will help some of the districts that have really been hurt. We actually fared better than many of our colleagues in terms of the enrollment draw. Other districts got decimated.
Thank you. And, and speaking of the high school, I know that funding was cut for the high school, which led us into the problem with the baseball fields, et cetera, et cetera. Originally, all the, well, I guess you refer to it as the athletic complex, which encompasses all the sports for Durfee. Now, my understanding is that the original funding included the athletic complex, but then funding was cut, so now the athletic complex is not in there, so the funding for these items are in capital plans.
So that's not fully accurate. The initial price tag on the new building, which was, when we started the process, was up over $300 million. Through the, through the great work of the school building committee and the MSBA, members of the city team, et cetera, were able to get to a final price tag of around $265 million. Of that, some costs are reimbursable. So the costs that the state funds through the MSBA project do not include a pool, for example. We paid for the pool, the taxpayers did, on our own, the retro of the pool. When we did the design with the architects, we wanted to preserve the current, we would never get a field house as big as we currently have. So instead of, and the, the project would have funded a field house, but it wouldn't be what we have. So we said, let's retro. So those dollars were included in, I think the final split was 64% of the whole project, does that capture it? About 64% of the whole project is funded by the state, we've picked up the rest. But the fields, after that initial visioning, if you will, were never part of the project. But we've known all along that we're trying our best, if there was ways to be able to mitigate the drainage, which I think we've done with the original plan, and any monies left over that we could apply to those fields. The fields were something we were going to have to take care of. Just so you know, like AstroTurf or the old, what we used to call AstroTurf, now called FieldTurf, it has a lifespan of about 10 years. So each carpet, as it's referred to, the infrastructure underneath is concrete and press fill and the, the initial expense of doing a turf field is not the same when you have to put a new carpet because it's just like putting a new wig on, it's just the top of it. So the infrastructure of it will be fine, but we know that our carpet, for example, is, I think we're 11 years on the current carpet and it's been stitched and fixed and, and all those things. We're going to need a, a new carpet, not only for safety, but I mean, we're Division One program and the city needs that kind of facility. So we'll be working to make sure that, that we, we do our best to be able to make that happen for kids.
Yeah, the, I have this, I have the, I believe it was the sec, I don't know where she went, the secretary sent this, correct, on the athletic complex? In an email outlining what the complex is, varsity baseball field, football stadium, junior varsity, varsity softball, et cetera, et cetera. And I think truly, the taxpayers were under the impression, when they voted for the school, that all of this was going to be in the price tag.
Well, we never said that and I think the, we were very clear about what we were actually getting and what we weren't. So it was truth in advertising, as Mr. Aguirre likes to say, through the whole process. We were very clear about what it was and what it wasn't.
I find that, and I'm not being argumentative, believe me. I just find that interesting because I know that the, I know that the president, when we found out that in the capital plan, you were looking for 1.8 million for, for the baseball field, he was shocked. He himself thought that the baseball field was included. So anyways, I, and then we had 4.9 million next year in capital funding for other fields. So I ended up inquiring as to what it encompassed. It turned out to be an athletic complex. It was a $6.7 million price tag. Now that, with the 600,000 and additional lighting for the baseball field, we're looking at 7.3 million for the athletic complex. I'm going to read you an email that I got back on the 6.7, because I was questioning it. "6.7 million was a guesstimate based on industry figures and needed fields as discussed during planning meetings with the school department. That number included the baseball field. The school department is not at a point to present any particulars at this time. We are in the middle of an athletic complex audit and design project. We will update the administration with changes to the five-year capital plan." And I guess my reason for reading this and bringing all of, all of this up is I have a hard time agreeing to and voting to fund all of these items, not knowing the particulars, not knowing how much money. And at the last meeting, I did make the comment that it's very difficult for me to say, sure, I'll vote to spend, you know, to bond for 2.4 million and spend more taxpayer dollars when in reality, the dollar amount for this athletic complex far exceeds what this body is able to vote on. And theoretically, it should, it should be going to the voter to decide, do they want to bond and spend that much more taxpayer dollar? So that's basically, I guess, my comments on the athletic complex and, again, additional funding, additional monies, while we're talking about Durfee and what's going on with that. So, and I'd like to switch and what's going on with that. So, and I'd like to switch gears here and ask a couple of questions.
Before you do, Counselor, I just want to make a quick point.
Sure.
For clarification purposes. So I was very puzzled at that point, when we found out that the football, the baseball complex wasn't included in the $265 million school project. So we inquired and doing some due diligence, and I spoke to Vice Chairman Costa at length about this several months ago. It was the then mayor, Mayor Correa, who decided, when they were up before MSBA, that they were going to decide to go with the pool for $6 million versus going for the athletic complex, whatever that would cost for the baseball field. So it wasn't a decision made by the, this current administration or the school administration. The mayor and the city administrator at the time took it upon themselves to say, we're going to go to get a new pool at $6 million with no feasibility study, no use of studies done, see what would be used more. And then they decided to go with the pool instead of doing the, the fields. Mr. Costa, is that correct?
So Mr. President, you are absolutely correct that it was a decision that was made the day of. We were at the MSBA. I don't know how many conversations occurred regarding, I don't recall it being a one or the other, but you're right. The pool was not included. It was not going to be reimbursable by MSBA. I think they were looking at the total scope of the project. And like the superintendent said, if we're going to keep the field house and retrofit it, then what would we do with a pool that essentially, one, didn't meet the standards for its length, so we couldn't use, use it for competition purposes. So I think it was, decision was made then to include the pool in the cost of the project, given, I guess, the overall scope of keeping and maintaining the field house. And because the pool is adjacent to the field house, then we absolutely had to address the issue of the pool. It wouldn't make sense to have a $258 million school, not, not to have a pool and have a gym that's retrofitted, but a pool that's not conducive to state tournaments, et cetera, et cetera. So, but you're right. The premise was, there was a decision that was made the day of. Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Costa. Counselor Dion, you still have the floor.
So, yes, and I had one more question in terms of the fields. I know that also at the last meeting, at a recent meeting, I should say, I was talking about my concern about the artificial turf or the, not having natural turf. And one of the things we were told was that by having the Class 1 field, you'd be able to rent it out, generate some revenue for the school department to apply towards different projects or whatever the case may be. Subsequent to that, there was a school committee meeting where there was a discussion on not charging to use the fields. So is it, you would charge to use the field? You wouldn't, you won't charge to use the field? Are there certain groups that wouldn't be charged? What's the thought process on that at this point?
So our, our athletic programs use our fields for free as part of our athletic budget. We're actually working with the local leagues around free use of our grass fields. But of course, there's still a cost, costing bathrooms, so porta-johns, and a cost of trash. And, and we're going to control, you know, if things left the pigs die, you forfeit your ability to have our fields for free. So we're going to take those very seriously. The turf fields that you refer to in terms of rental is a possibility. We currently rent those fields for use with certain leagues now, and will continue to do so. The, the issue, the problem with gra, why we, why we have turf fields, A, it's, it's 365-day ability to use. With grass, you have to rest at least one season per year, so you always lose a season, especially in New England, when you only have three seasons of play. So you're down to two. And, and, and we don't have enough fields in the city, if we were all grass, to be able to run all of our programming with middle school and freshman JV and varsity. So the turf field is the best investment. We feel that there would be a great continued possibility for rental. That money goes into a revolving account, and it covers maintenance for our fields, ongoing repetitive maintenance.
So when you say that, um...
Can I just provide a point of information, as well?
Sure.
And I don't need to jump in.
Yeah, sure.
But it's, it's to Counselor's point. The use of schools fund that we have now, that was established by the school committee, on average, on any given year, generates $100,000 to $200,000 a year. So if you think in terms of all of the other costs associated with all the facilities that are used, we would have to hold in abeyance all of the money for five years or even 10 years, depending on how much came in annually, to cover the cost of replacing the turf fields, if you will, about a million bucks. So just to put in perspective, when we talk about the amount of money generated from revenues from use of schools, it does average, and yes, it does help to knock off some punchless items in buildings, offset some costs to custodial and security services during those events. But the reality is that we really have to decide. If we're not going to charge, then obviously it diminishes the use of schools account, and therefore, less money we can turn back into keeping the facilities to a standard where community organizations want to use it and that they are safe. So I, I just put that out there because of the point we're talking about, whether we're going to charge or not charge. It's a balancing act. At the end of the day, taxpayers have already paid for those fields, if you think about it. So really going back and charging them again, you know, it really is at fair. And so we have to look at the local leagues and what we have available. And I think we charge a reasonable fee for it. But again, when you look at how much the use of schools' revolving account that we have generates in revenue and what the costs are to keep simply just the, the, excuse me, the football fields and the practice fields, you'd have to leave that in abeyance or not touch that money for five or even 10 years, just to put it towards one replacement. So with that, I yield it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costa.
No, yeah, and, and I agree. I, I, you know, I didn't take obje, you know, I wasn't against the fact that you would rent them or wouldn't rent them. I think it was more the fact of, it was part of the argument as to why there should be the astroturf, because of the additional abuse and use, et cetera, that you can't use natural turf to the extent that you can the, the astroturf.
Right.
So that was part of the argument as to why you should, you know, we should invest that much money into the field. So I guess that's, once I heard, now let, maybe we won't rent, so there's, that, there's where my question came from. In terms of natural turf, you, you say you won't rent the ones that are natural turf. What, and again, what is left? Because the football fields, junior varsity and varsity are both astroturf, I believe. The baseball field will be astroturf. The infield for softball will be astroturf? What isn't astroturf? What is natural turf?
We have a lot of fields across our complexes, across the, are you talking specifically?
I'm talking, I'm, I'm speaking Durfee. You're at the athletic complex versus the city fields.
So we still have the JV softball and baseball, and the new field that is going in, we're trying to figure out whether that is turf or if it's grass. That's a multi-purpose field. So there's still some opportunities, but I want to be clear, I didn't want you to assume that we're not renting. What, I want to be clear about is, we're not charging for the rental of the grass fields with the local leagues at this time. So that's a huge benefit to the city on the, on the, our use of grass fields.
Right. Because in addition to that, if you were, obviously, they would try much harder to use the city fields versus paying the fee to use the athletic field.
Right. And we're all trying to work together with, with the city's department, parks and recs. So I mean, it's, I think we do a pretty good job of, of, of understanding that community access is critical to being a good neighbors and good stewardess.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to switch gears just a little bit here, in terms of the Watson School. What I want, I want you to know, number one, am I against repairing the school? Absolutely not. Do we need ADA compliance? Absolutely, we do. Not an issue whatsoever. And I don't need to take a tour to know we have to do it. I mean, it's, it's just obvious. My questions come from the, you know, why did it take so long to actually get Phase 1 up and running? I have six quarterly reports, FY 20, 20 quarter 1, all the way to FY 21 quarter 2. And it wasn't until quarter 2 that windows, doors, boilers, and fire suppression was installed. The roof still hasn't been done. Do you know how much money has been expended and how much hasn't been expended? What actually is left of Phase 1?
Sure. I'm going to have my expert on the Watson answer all of your questions. Ken Pacheco.
Counselor, so the project is not completed. Phase 1 is not completed. We do still have a roof to reconstruct as part of Phase 1. We've moved a couple of items from Phase 2 to Phase 1, because the bidding came in very favorably on Phase 1. So we're moving the handicap ramp in front of the building with the residual funds and try and get that accomplished. I could tell you that we are 75, if not 85%, complete with Phase 1 of that project, which would mean that I don't have the finger off the top of my head, because it is a city project. But I'm going to tell you that we are very, very close to finishing Phase 1, with the exception of the roof and a few small items.
Would I be correct in asking, in terms of the roof, I mean, is it leaking? What type of issues?
No, so what we did...
There's nothing like, I guess what I'm getting at is, you always do the envelope before you do the inside? Because to do the inside first would make no sense.
So we put a temporary roof on the building before the, before the bad weather. And knowing full well that we would not get the, the interior work in that roof area. So that the roofing members, there is some shoring up on, on some of the items. We do have a chimney to work on that needs repointing or, you know, complete takedown and rebuild. So those items still need to be done. But we did put a temporary roof to be sure that we salvaged everything that we had just installed on the inside of the building. So there is a, a brand-new temporary roof on that building, and that'll sustain us until we start that roof construction this summer.
Of the 4.9 million for Phase 2, is that strictly Phase 2 money? Or is some of that money incorporated, or are you bringing some of that over from Phase 1 to complete Phase 1?
No, so that's all, it's, I think it's 4.936, something like that, if I'm not mistaken. But it's, it's not a round number.
Yeah, 4,911, yeah.
Right. Exactly. So, so all of that is for Phase 2, and, and better than 75% of it is for ADA compliance.
Okay. So the original number was 7,426,000. So basically, 25% of that dollar amount in Phase 1 is, are the monies that, that you need for the roof?
Yes.
Then that's the MSBA accelerated repair program in Phase 1.
Yes.
So to Counselor in seat 2's point, Mr. Pacheco or Superintendent Malone, did you say that roofing, because I know roofing was part of the first phase of the permit that's already been issued. So you didn't go in and rip the roof and replace it? You put a temporary roof up, and now you're going to go put a new roof in?
So the temporary roof was put on because the, it's not just a rip off of a roof. It's not just replacing a roof. So a lot of the structure, the building is 106, 110 years old. So some of the members, structural members in that building needed to be replaced, shored up, married to other, you know, to newer timbers. So in order to do that, the short amount of time that you have, weather-wise, to work on these projects, because they, by the time they come around with the procurement, with the funding, with all of the pieces that go into putting a project, an accelerated repair project together, you have to, your window to construct is really short.
Okay.
So we had to put a temporary roof in order to continue the work, put the new windows in, replace electrical lines, put the fire suppression system in, the fire and unseater panels, and all of those items had to be done. But we didn't want to take the chance on the, the roof that was there. So we put a temporary roof to hold us over until all of the design work was done, repairing some of the deficiencies in that roof structure.
So to Counselor Dion's point, this, this funding, you, you spoke about a funding mechanism, right? The city council authorized the funding in May of 2019. You would then, at that meeting, indicated to the city council, after Counselor Pelletier asked you the question, there's a Phase 2 coming.
Yes.
And you were going to be coming back to us at some point in 2020?
When the design work was complete.
Okay, so you had the funding mechanism in May of 2019, and it took you until probably June of 2020?
2019 would be when you, when you authorized the funds. And from 2019 until April or May of 2020, when the project went out to bid. So there's a lot of process between you issuing the dollars and us actually being able to construct something.
Okay, so then, I guess my question is, and I don't mean to take over the floor of Counselor Dion, that why didn't you come to us in 2020?
Because the work wasn't ready to get started on Phase 2. The work wasn't even designed.
Right, I understand, I understand that. So the city council authorized the project in May of 2019.
Yes.
You pulled a permit in June of 2020.
Yes.
In May of 19, in May of 19, when you, before us, you indicated to us that you were going to go to the, you were going to come back to the city council in May of, in early part of 2020, because we had a deadline of November of this year, 2021, to get this project going. So I guess my, I guess Counselor, Counselors, including myself.
Sure.
Want to have a better chronological order about why it took you a year to pull a permit when the city council authorized funding in May of 2019?
So first of all, the city doesn't pull permits. The contractors do. And we didn't have a contractor in place until that date.
Until June of 2020?
Exactly. So the, the project, first of all, the project started in February of 17. So we all know how long it took Durfee. Durfee started in 2012, and we're not going to finish until '22. So there's, there's not a magic formula as to how quickly we can move these. There is a very, very, very methodical way that we go about MSBA projects and public procurement. And that's exactly what this issue is. It's the project taking its form in an orderly fashion so that we can fund it. We can put it out for design. We can put it out for construction bid, and we can construct it. And that's exactly what we've done. In the middle of some of that, and not that it's the reason why we didn't come to you earlier for money, but in the middle of some of this, we did have to deal with COVID. We did have to deal with contractors who weren't bidding, because they didn't know what the climate was going to be like, and how much work they were going to have to do in order to keep the project safe. But with all that being said, that project moved on. We did put the temporary roof on, when we found out through all of the forensic search in that building, that we did have some structural issues, and those needed to be addressed. Again, being partnered with MSBA on that project, that process doesn't happen overnight. So we did do all of that work, and along with the contractor and the city, we decided that we would put that temp roof on and keep the project moving. Or the project would have been stalled right until now.
Okay.
So there was no reason other than, number one, we needed design work on, on Phase 1. We didn't know what that was going to cost us at the time. We're very fortunate that all of those numbers came in within budget or well below budget.
So you have to go through this same process, most likely, because too?
Exactly. Yes.
So it's impossible, if the city council would have authorized the project a month ago, that you were going to get this done by the end of November?
I never said, down at this council, that that project would be done in November. What I did say is, every week, every day that goes by that we don't authorize the project to start, no one takes forever at its goodwill, and it's going to do all of this design work for free.
And you don't feel coming to the council in 2020?
It wouldn't have, I wasn't ready to come to council. The design work isn't something that I can rush. We were not designed yet. We didn't have the, the ability to get started on Phase 2 when we had so much of Phase 1 yet to complete. It didn't make any sense.
So my question is, if the council would have authorized the project two, two weeks ago or four weeks ago, there's a very strong possibility that you are not going to be done by the end of November, when the ADA waiver expires?
Complete, yes. You're absolutely right.
Okay.
But that was never said.
What was never said?
There was, I never once made any kind of notion at this council or anywhere else that that project would be finished before that date. What I continue to say, and what I will say today, is that the project can't start until you authorize the dollars. That is not on any, any designer or anything else. If the dollars show up, we start the process, and depending on how long it takes to do that work, is when we get started. Will I have to go for a waiver? Or should I say, the city go for the waiver? Then yes, they will.
Have you started that process for the waiver?
Absolutely not.
You haven't? Okay.
I have no money to say we're going to actually do it.
Right. Okay. I'll follow up with that after. Counselor in seat 2.
Yeah, I only have a couple. So what would be the timeline on completing the project, do you think?
When are we going to authorize it? If we authorize it tonight, then we would start the process. And my guess is that we could complete that project sometime in April.
So this is, so... So this is, so basically it's a twelve-month project?
I need summer, I need summers to work because we have students who need to occupy the building. So all of these things wrap around certain things, ten weeks of the summer and weather. If I have a ten-week summer that I can work in, then I'm not trying to work around kids or work second shift or things like that. If I miss the summer work, then now I'm working second shift for the entire project. So I can't guarantee that project's going to be done in March, April, May, June. It may take another summer to get it done. That's where we stand. The urgency at which I come here, when I came here and when we brought before the school committee in February, was that if I could hit the cycle and do summer work, then I would have the, what I call the dirtiest part of the job, the demo work, completed while students weren't in the building. It's the easiest way to do these projects. This is the way we've done other ARP projects. But I'm not positive that I can do that this summer, but we'll do what we can.
Because traditionally with a lot of projects, you do operate with a second shift, correct?
Whenever, whenever we have to. And we did on the first part of Watson.
Right.
The difference was is that was trying to work in the wintertime.
Right.
When it got dark at four o'clock.
So theoretically, if you have the ten-week window in the summer, would you operate two shifts essentially?
It would only be one shift.
Or you would only do the day shift?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat one, Councilor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess I don't know where to begin. There's a lot to say. What I will say is just a couple of clarifying points based on conversations that our statements people have made. Just in terms of Mr. Agia with the debt exclusion, I will say that I was one councillor who specifically spoke up against the debt exclusion. Quite frankly, I blame this body, the City Council, who was authorized to actually take that vote for debt exclusion. And I still maintain, as I maintained before, that I support the DIRFIE project, but the DIRFIE project should have been paid within our debt limit, within our general operating budget, and not gone to the debt exclusion. Quite frankly, and I said it back then and I'll continue to say it again, the average voter does not understand what a debt exclusion is. The city of Far River has never done a debt exclusion. So to put that back on the ballot and expect the average voter to understand the implications of a debt exclusion when we have elected officials who don't understand the basic premise of a debt exclusion is just unfathomable to the point where, you know, this is what we are put in this place to make that decision. So we put it out there and to Ms. Ahadi's point, the debt exclusion is to pay for the entire project. I know we had an administration that said it was going to be a fifty-fifty split or a sixty-forty split or whatever the case may be. I said it back then and I'll say it again, that it will be a money grab when we get to the point when we're in financial straits and the only way to get additional revenue is to go to the debt exclusion. And we continue to see this time and time again. So I can't blame the administration when we're, you know, struggling to deal with and come up with revenue that we're not constantly talking about the debt exclusion. That's why it's important for us to truly have conversations and hold people accountable with what we want to see. Comes back to planning and the point of this whole project. So that's what I'll say about the exclusion. The reserve funds that Ms. Agia had brought up as well, the thirty million dollars, again, that is a rule of thumb, what you typically want to see. And I would agree that we would need to include the schools in that, get that to thirty million dollars. What I will state, and, you know, we saw the, we saw the presentations by the schools and the city, you know, that thirty million dollars, we're not even close to that. And the FY22 budget is drawing down on these one-time funds. You're starting to see the Water Enterprise Fund using, I forget how much it was, close to a million dollars. You're seeing the Sewer Department using one-time monies again to supplement the budget. We're starting to see one-time monies being used in the general fund operating budget. And we're just, again, doing exactly what we have done in the past and that's using one-time monies to offset issues that we have with revenue. It's not sustainable, it hasn't been sustainable, and it's going to catch up to us. And it's going to catch up to us in three to four years when that money isn't there and we need to really make it up. So I think part of this whole conversation, and I disagree with the charter, right? Because when we look at the charter, we're supposed to be here discussing, you know, the financial condition of the city, we're supposed to be talking about revenue, we're supposed to be talking about expenditures. We just spent two and a half hours, we've accomplished nothing. We got a presentation on a budget, we'll leave here. Nothing has been really accomplished and we need to do this seventy-five days before the budget, the new fiscal year. And it states to, for the mayor to prepare, I'm sorry, information prepared by the mayor in order to develop a coordinated budget. Well, the budget's already completed for the most part, so any conversation that we have here tonight is pointless. You don't have these meetings seventy-five days before the fiscal year. You have these meetings when the fiscal year begins for next fiscal year, right? That's when we start having these conversations. And quite frankly, I don't think we've addressed anything that we really need to address. We talk about net school spending and I appreciate the net school spending portion of this, but other communities, and the superintendent mentioned CCONC, and I challenge people in CCONC, when you get to affluent communities who are funding net school spending above a hundred percent and they're in the hundred and forties or the hundred and fifties, they don't talk about net school spending. They don't really understand what net school spending is because they're not even close to that level. When we get to a situation where at the city of Far River, we're failing to meet net school spending year and year again, that's when it gets challenging. So we seen an increase in net school spending, which is a good thing for the schools. But with that increase comes the increase in local contribution, which is what we're struggling with, right? We start to see the revenues, the revenues are not increasing, they're flatlining. And I'm sure councillors have had conversations with the administration talking about what are we going to do with the revenues? So I think to, you know, the council president's point is that this meeting or a meeting similar to this should be used to start discussing how are we going to start using these one-time monies, the ESR account monies, you know, the forty million dollars. How does it benefit the schools? How does it benefit the city? Can we offset some of the additional, any costs that we're really having on the city side? Because right now, you know, you go back, you know, five, 10 years, it was the schools that were truly struggling to provide a quality education to the students. Over the last couple of years, we've seen a switch, we've seen funding get thrown into the schools. Not to suggest that the schools have all this endless money, but there's not a financial concern on the school side like there was maybe back in 2010, 2011. But on the state side, we're still struggling, right? We're struggling with the fact that we have residents coming here saying that we don't want to go to the two and a half levy, right? That's roughly, if we don't go to the two and a half levy, that generates roughly two and a half million, three million dollars. That doesn't cost us, that doesn't even cover the cost of pension or healthcare increase. We've got other items here that we talk about on top of the schools, I mean, the city's local contribution to net school spending. We've got transportation of eleven million dollars. So that's eleven million dollars that comes out of the city's operating budget that goes over to the schools but doesn't get counted towards any type of either contribution or net school spending. And from my standpoint, and we went to the, we went to the State House and they said they were doing all this reform and the reform was fine and it helped some communities, but again, it hurts communities like the city of Far River because it increases the burden. We still have to pay the eleven million dollars, we still have debt service. I mean, we've got ten million dollars in debt service on a year-to-year basis. How much of that is the schools roughly, percentage-wise?
I didn't bring that with me this evening, but the majority of it's school.
So again, that's another ten million. So that's, you're talking about, you know, twenty million dollars going to the schools between transportation and debt. So I think the conversation, as Mr. Agia had mentioned a couple of times in conversations that he's had offline with us, is talking about creating stabilization accounts. And these are the conversations that we need to really have, and you and I, council president, had this conversation yesterday, that from my standpoint, we can create a stabilization account tomorrow or tonight if we wanted to. And I think we need to have those conversations about creating a stabilization account specifically for the school department so that it entices them. And I know that they're constantly trying to spend to get to the hundred percent of net school spending, but if there is a way not to fully spend their budget and you've got some carryovers as opposed to trying to get, you know, prepaid tuition or whatever the case may be, anything that comes back in free cash, that percentage goes directly into that stabilization account. We build for infrastructure and capital items that they're talking about, whether it's DIRFIE fields, whether it's the Watson School, whatever the case may be, to help alleviate some of the actual costs that we have on the operation budget. So I think that, those are conversations that can be had, that we should be having. Debt service payments, can we, and I think you asked the question with regards to the one point three million dollars and I missed the vote for him yesterday. So one point three million dollars was voted by the school committee to come over to, to be utilized for the local contribution. Can I get some clarification on that?
So my understanding and maybe Ms. Almeida can.
Mr. Costa. Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in the governor's budget by statute, if it makes it to the finish line, becomes law. He is allowed for a provision in the Chapter Seventy formula to allow districts to use their ESR funds to assist with the foundation in municipalities, up to, I think it's seventy-five percent. Last night, we took a vote on one point three.
One point three.
A little over one point three million dollars. However, with the additional nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand that we're going to get, it's going to drive that number up by twenty percent. So about a million and a half, give or take. And so the vote last night was to transfer that money or to provide that money to the city for its foundation so it can meet its obligation for a hundred percent of net school spending. So the school department's actually contributing to money that's going to be used to meet the city's obligation for net school spending, if you can follow that. However, there was a caveat and Mr. Agia made the motion that it be tied to the Watson and the DIRFIE fields project. So if the debt exclusion is voted on and passed, the school department will transfer that one point three or one point five, whatever that number will be, when it comes to fruition when the state budget is reconciled to the city. So that's where that funding is, then that's the total.
So essentially to fund the projects roughly?
I'm sorry?
To fund the projects, the Watson School project, at least some payments or something like that? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, no, because I think the one point three or the one point five, whatever it's going to be at the end of the day, was already budgeted or at least projected in Ms. Ahadi's city budget for Chapter Seventy net school spending.
That's what I'm saying, frees up some money.
Right, right. Well, in the debt service.
Not to interrupt you, Mr. Costa, but only to the extent that if it is utilized and the intention, based on the way I read the language in the governor's budget, was intended to reduce the city's obligation, basically the required net minimum. If you tie it to Watson and the fields, it does the city no good in the '22 budget because that would be debt, future debt at some future time, which doesn't have any effect on the '22 budget.
But it could, it could pay down some, whatever debt service it is. I know they tie.
If it's tied to Watson and the fields, that debt service won't occur until '23 or '24.
Yeah.
And it will only be the principal and interest at that particular point in time. So quite frankly, that's not how I read or interpreted what the governor had intended by adding that guidance into the ERSI two money.
I believe Mr. Agia has a point of information.
Yes.
Mr. Agia.
So what the vote was last night was in an effort of the school committee to be partners with the city. The Watson project and the field project was the hot topic because we were trying to figure out how we're going to pay for this. The councillors are very concerned, the council president, that we're not participating in helping to pay for some of those. So in an effort to get that one point three million over to the city to help the burden there, it wasn't stated in the motion that that has to be paid for the Watson. What it had, what it was, was that we want a successful vote of this council, which I'm sure in the infinite wisdom of this council, they were going to fund this at some point. They were looking to try to see if we were going to partner with them. So simply the vote last night was for us to make a commitment to the voters, to the city, to say, we're going to give you the one point three million that we don't have to give as long as you approve funding for the project. That's a separate issue. So it's not, doesn't have to be paid to it. It's going to relieve your burden and you, all we're asking you is to do your due diligence, approve those projects so they can move forward and it's a win, it's a win, and it's a win, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. And Ms. Ahadi, to Councilor Kadim's point, whether we get the one point three, the one point five million dollars, it's one point three or one point five million dollars of money that we weren't going to have anyway. So if you utilize that money to pay down some of the debt payments that the city has in the assets of nine million dollars, it is going to essentially accomplish the same thing, just not saying it as directly as Mr. Agia said. Councilor in seat one.
So is that a true statement? Because I thought I saw one of your slides that said that it included, maybe I misinterpreted your slide, but I thought you had built the assumption that the schools would allow you to use their local contribution.
That's what I, that's the assumption based on the guidance from the governor. That's correct.
Okay. So it's already built in, so that the savings is, they were expecting it regardless if there was something tied to it or not.
Right, but we need the authorization from the school committee, I believe, in order to get that.
No, I just, I just want to, the only reason I'm confirming it is this is not, it's not as it appears that it does an additional one point three or one point five million dollars that is freed up because they've already used that as potential revenue or a revenue source to offset some of their obligations. So that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Councilor.
So, I mean, just, I personally, you know, I'd look to the mayor, to the, you know, council president, to the vice chairman on the school, and I know the mayor sits on the, as the chairman of the school committee, but, you know, I think we should probably try to have some of these meetings well in advance of the seventy-five days so that we can start having these conversations, particularly about how we can establish accounts, how we would like to see some of these monies spent in order to kind of offset maybe some non-net school spending eligible costs that we have to take on. And if there are needs on the school side that if we're going to have a partnership, like a stabilization account, that we start to get creative with what we need to do to really have this strategy moving forward. Again, because I think over the next couple of years, we're going to have some difficult times on the city side if we don't find, you know, new revenues or if we plan on not going to the two and a half levy or adding additional fees. You know, at the end of the day, a municipality only makes their revenues through taxation and fees, right? So that's, that's where it comes down to. So my concern is, is that as I start to see these presentations, and I know they're, you know, the administration is working diligently to ensure that the one-time monies are being spent on one-time monies, but when those, these monies come and go and we still have specific needs that need to get built into these operating budgets, that we are in a situation that we can be able to handle it. And quite frankly, you know, I think the reserve accounts need to be, need to be addressed. You know, thirty million dollars is probably a real stretch, but I think we need to get somewhere close to that and I think it's financial planning. But I think that financial planning, in order for it to work long-term, needs to include this body, school committee, and the administration. And we really need to have time where we can talk about, it's a working session that we can all just freely talk and say, okay, this is what I want to see or this is what we should be looking at because just having presentations on the budget, you know, we're going to have that in two weeks as well. So with that, I yield for now.
Thank you. Councilor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
Good evening. Just a couple of questions that I have and a couple of comments. One, to Superintendent Malone, I know you spoke about the enrollment, but the House and Senate also has forty million dollars in a reserve fund in case the enrollment goes up in October. I assume that you knew that and perhaps didn't mention it.
Well, I did mention it.
You did? Oh, then I perhaps didn't hear.
Yeah, the true cost is probably closer to one hundred and seventy-five million need across Commonwealth, but the forty million right now is a place that, but I think there's still hope that we're going to go back and use the October nineteen numbers. So we'll see what happens in the next phase of the state budget process.
Another question that I had is with the new school, estimated completion date of July fifteenth, and the school hours are going to be extended. They're not classroom hours, but the school itself will be open longer to serve more of the community?
Yeah, we, our facilities are open now to serve the community and, you know, we anticipate the continued use of both the DIRFIE facility and the central RPA facility is really like essentially eighteen-hour-a-day facilities. We had DIRFIE after-doc program now with vocational classrooms for alternative ed kids. We got a program now with Diamond After Hours where they'll be going back and forth and some of the Diamond kids will likely be coming to take some of our AP classes. Our facilities will, in terms of what the day looks like, will still have the traditional day, but there will be extended programming throughout.
Well, like there's different cafes, so a child who's staying after school, studying with friends, participating in extracurricular activity, you know, has someplace that they can get something to eat, the public can come in.
Likely, I mean, we're, you know, we continue to, for some families, we provide three meals a day, you know, breakfast and two lunches. But it's, 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 these are all concepts that we know. But it's, 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 these are all concepts that we know that cities such as ours needs to have.
And I would just hope, because the taxpayers, you know, are footing the bill for the high school, just to have some kind of a PR piece out there, to let people know what is available in the school, after hours, what services are available, because as I talked to some people in the community about having tour at the school, and how beautiful it is, and the, all of the extras that students would have there, and the benefit of people being able to utilize it, people are like in awe that they would be able to utilize it. So I think, and I did hear the talk about having something in the courtyard, and having tours to go in, yesterday at the school committee meeting, I thought that that was a great idea.
I mean, that's been ongoing, it'll continue, and, you know, we use social media quite a bit, the Durfee Rising campaign, which is the original to get the vote, they're still communicating, there's a monthly newsletter about all the cool stuff, we're tweeting out photos every single day, folks have been really jazzed up about that. In terms of the after-hours stuff, I mean, you know, Durfee, right now, you know, we still have athletic events going on, there'll be people training in the brand-new fitness center through the rest of the night, all, of course, covered and staffed and supported. So we're very excited about the future of what the new Durfee will be, and of course, the community's going to have a central role in it. The design is very community-oriented for our nine vocational programs. We used to have five, we've grown to nine in the last four years.
I think former school committeemen, Joe Martin, would be very happy, because he plugged for that for years and years and years, so.
Mr. Martins was, Mr. Martin was a central part of our push, and I thanked him for all his guidance on those growth, but, you know, the Cosmo program's going to look very different. People are going to want to make that the place where they go get their hair and nails done. Our Granite Grill, the new restaurant, will rival the amazing restaurant at Diamond, in terms of quality and product. The marketing program in the school store, all of these are publicly facing entryways, so that the public will be able to access during the day, during after-hours, and, you know, we're going to have weekend things going on, and all the stuff. So it's, it's, it's going to be, you know, the former Durfee student, current superintendent in the great city of Taunton, John Cabral, he texted me yes, two days ago, he was down here going to church with his mom, and he said, "The brightest thing in the city of Fall River is that high school you're building." And he's absolutely right, this is really going to be a game changer for the community in terms of what will be possible for the next 50, 60 years.
I think that's great. I do have a question for Mr. Pacheco. When, if you don't mind, when we spoke about the council's delay on voting for this, for the Watson School and the Fields, but more of my concern was the Watson School. There's a lot of money coming in to different communities around us, both school departments and towns and other cities. To be able to know that you had the money, could you immediately be able to start bidding process and getting things going?
So we would, whatever time period we have to wait after the vote-
Right.
-we would immediately start that process, and my hope is that I don't lose 10 weeks of summer.
Right.
Because that's very, very important to me opening up on September 1 to students, and knowing that I can have a clean building and work, I will still have to work after 3 o'clock, when that building closes, put a shift on 3 to 10, or something like that, and be able to get that building, you know, completed by early spring.
Well, the concern that I have is that if the vote was taken, let's say, a month, a month and a half ago, to already start your bidding, start your procurements, et cetera, but with everybody else getting money too, all these other communities are looking for projects to be done in their community as well, and, you know, you want to get the best that you can get to build, or to remodel, or, you know, an elevator company, or to do the stairs, or, you know, any of that. And if all these people are already committed to working elsewhere, then, you know, that'll put you behind as well.
We could have bidding problems, we continue to see different things. We went out to bid not too long ago for Chromebooks, for the new high school.
How'd you do that?
And we expected that it was going to be between 4 and maybe 600, and the bids came in a little under a million.
4 and 600, and came in under a million?
So that's just a product of everybody wanting the same products and getting gouged. And I don't believe that that's, that we're at that critical stage right now, but the longer we wait, obviously, we're going to run into that, just like the city will when it's during road construction time. There's only so many contractors to go around.
Exactly. If we're going to get all this money, we're going to do streets and sidewalks, how many companies are around, and I'm sure other communities want to do the same thing.
Exactly.
Other ques-, thank you, Mr. Pacheco, and I do want to thank you for all the work that you do in this city, because I know that you're all over the place, I happen to bump into you all the time throughout the city, but I do want to thank you for your awesome work that you do for the city, and specifically for the school department. I would hope that we would have this on the agenda next Tuesday, to look at this vote, so we could take this vote for the Field and for Watson, no matter how it comes out, at least put it on the agenda. We've had the opportunity to talk to some people about it. The rest of my questions have been answered by some of my colleagues. I would say to Counselor Lee, I think that the way that every school gets an amount of what their stormwater fee is going to be, is based on the impervious soil, it's so much per square foot. That's how it was done many years ago, through former mayor Bob Carrera, that they did that. So, you know, the South Coast Marketplace, Shore Stop and Shop, BCC, on parking lots, it's so much. And I don't think that that's ever increased, to my knowledge, I don't know if Mrs. Sahadi would know, if that square footage increased, maybe that's something to ask Mr. Frillin when he comes down.
I'll certainly check with Mr. Frillin tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's increased, because for the homeowners, it has increased from 35, and now I think they want 47, is what they're going to be asking for.
I believe Mr. Frillin has increased the cost to the departments as well.
Okay. But with that, I yield, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you. Can I just, clarifying point from Mr. Pacheco, just on the Watson School, did you say, what are we going out to bid for? Architectural services or actual construction?
So it's construction.
Construction, so you have your drawings.
So we have, we have the architectural service person still on from Phase 1, and we have the OPM still on from Phase 1.
Okay.
So we do, we are going out to bid, we're going out to design bid for the rest.
So you're doing design bid?
No, 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 I'm sorry. We're going design, we have design, we're going to bid.
You're going to bid?
Yes.
So nothing really precludes you from going out to bid, as long as you put in the RFQ that funding is still not available, because it would still require a vote? So you could lock everything up? It's not unheard of.
So are we saying tonight that we, I can go out and put on central register and move the project along without having funding in place?
Absolutely.
I'm not saying that you're wrong, I'm just saying that-
You just have to put it out there, saying that the funding still needs approval from, it's no different than what you would do. You could do the same thing from architectural services, and say, and not execute a contract until you had funding available.
So we're not going to execute a contract?
Right. So you would say that, whatever it is, all, I guess the point I'm making is, is that everybody wants to blame the council for this holdup? And quite frankly, I just want to ask you a question. Part of it was, if you were to come down as the resident expert, and I asked you, would the school committee and the school department be willing to pay for the debt service for that project? Would you be able to answer that question? Would you be authorized to answer that question?
Well, I would say that we can't pay the debt service, because it's not allowed. So that's my answer to a council, if that was asked.
What's not, I'm sorry, what's not allowed?
So the school department can't pay debt service?
Why not?
As part of net school spending?
I didn't say net school spending, I never mentioned net school spending. All I asked simply a question was whether or not the school department would pay for the debt service. That was it, nothing to do whether it be attributed to net school spending. Would you be authorized to tell us yes or no?
I don't think anybody here could be authorized, except for the school committee.
School committees are authority.
Really? Okay.
I don't think, that's my guess.
You're right, Ken.
I'm asking something, I'm just not-
Mr. Superintendent, do you want to clarify?
I just want to say that Ken is absolutely right, the only authority on expenditures on school department money in the Chapter 70 is to duly-appointed and elected school committee. They're the only authority that could approve that. No matter if I came here and said whatever it is I needed to say, it wouldn't matter. School committee is your fine authority by majority vote. That is the law, you understand the law, being a member of the Mass Municipal Association, understand that. It's bad practice to go out on bids without the financial backing of the, so that's one of the reasons why we use good practices on our side, we would never do that, that's why we didn't.
I would never suggest that you wouldn't do anything that wouldn't be good practices.
We didn't.
No, I know, thank God. Because if we had bad practices, you'd have lawsuits, and then we'd have to increase the settlement and judgment line for the school department, reallocate money. I mean, last time I checked, the school committee is not approving line item budgets, right? They give that authority away, bottom line.
No, just point of information, Mr. President.
Mr. Costa?
That's a fallacy.
Is it?
It is, it's an absolute fallacy.
I watched the school committee meeting the other day, and that's what was said.
So we had this conversation last night, the school committee has absolute line item authority. When we prepare our budget during budget presentations, by school principals, they outline, you'll see it in your budget presentation, or you're buying it when you get it, if they're asking for additional positions within their school, it's identified as additional positions.
Yeah.
And each one of those is approved and voted on by the committee. At any time, the committee can take a vote to eliminate that new position, or add a position. So we have absolute line item authority. I think what's getting confused is whether or not the superintendent has money in his professional salaries line account, line item, or bottom line for professional salaries, if he can, use that funding to hire an additional teacher, or does he have to come back to the school committee for approval? My contention has always been, we don't want to micromanage the superintendent's ability to run the district. And so by having to wait to come back to the school committee, to ask us for authority to hire an FTE, when he's got money in his professional salaries lines account, it's unneeded. It cuts too deep into the micromanagement side of the ledger. We don't need to micromanage superintendent. If he needs a teacher in his classroom, he shouldn't have to wait a month to come back to the committee to say, "I need a teacher, and this is why." So we have absolute line item authority, we've always had it. If the committee wants to decide to transfer monies within lines, we do that quarterly, we've always had that. I think the confusion is, whether or not the superintendent has to gain approval by the committee, if he has money in his professional salary line, and you know, there's always money in that line, you've got breakage, you've got retirement, you've got people who are leaving, so you'll always have some funding in that professional salaries line, as long as he doesn't exceed that line, and we're at 100% of net school spending, so he's not putting additional burden on the city by spending above what he's allowed to by law, and what we've approved, that's, I think, what the confusion is, but we've always had line item authority.
Yeah, so when I watched the meeting, you know, the superintendent specifically said, I believe it was to Mr. Aguirre, that you don't have the authority for line item budget, you only approve a bottom line budget. And I would philosophically disagree with you in terms of, and it's just a disagreement, that I think there is a liability, because the more FTEs that you add, that means that more healthcare that might not be in budget. If I was the mayor in the city, I'd be kicking and screaming that you don't have, that the school committee is not managing, you know, positions, just because you have salaries, and you've only approved 20 FTEs in that department, and he's got salaries to put another 20?
Right.
The impact on that is pension, healthcare, OPEB, there's a lot of implications associated with that.
If you're exceeding 100% of your obligation, if you're not, you still have to spend it anyway.
But that, but those conversations have long-term impacts, right? So from our side, from our side-
Right.
-we're talking about personnel.
Right.
Pension, retirement, right, so retirement, healthcare, OPEB.
Right.
Right? Significant, right? Aren't they significant costs, right, that continue to, long-term, impact the city? So when we start talking about that, I personally say, from my standpoint, and this is, I'm going off on a tangent, but that's a philosophical difference, I think that the school committee should be approving FTEs, and if you folks agree that you want to add it, then so be it. But I can tell you that I heard the superintendent, I'll pull the tapes, I'll send it over, the superintendent did, and maybe Mr. Aguirre can clarify what I heard and didn't hear, he's got better memory than I do, but I heard the conversation, I sent it over to Counsel Ponte, I said, "Are you watching this meeting? They gave away their authority." The superintendent clearly said that you only approve a bottom line, similar to what the city council does, bottom line, send it over, he gets to spend how he feels.
And that's absolutely incorrect.
Absolutely correct.
Mr. Aguirre, do you want to speak on this?
No, I think, to get to the bottom line, I said what I said in the public school committee meeting. Mr. Kadim is correct, we do not set the cap on how many employees we have. So when we do a budget, if we have 1,000 teachers, that, those 1,000 teachers we have, if you added all those up, it doesn't equal that salary. There's breakage, there's play, there's different stuff in there. So what we've always done is say, "We have X amount of people, that's the bottom line." I told the mayor at the meeting, when I was trying to advocate for this process, if the fire chief wants to come down and hire 195 or 200 firefighters, they have to get approval from the administration before they hire up above that cap. That's all we were asking for. The school committee doesn't do that. Superintendent Malone and Mr. Almeida, as a practice, they do if they wanted something to come forth. I was advocating for the fact that the school committee wasn't even codified in the regulations that that's the case. So these gentlemen actually were following what I would hope that we'd do, but then we opened it up and said, "You can do whatever you want." So if the superintendent wanted to hire two, three, four, or five people, he could do that without the authority of the school committee.
Right. As long as he stays within his line item for professional salaries, and again, if he doesn't exceed 100% of net school spending, it doesn't matter.
Yep. And all I'm saying is, as a good practice, if we want to talk about good practices, is that if we have 1,000 employees, or 800, however many employees, when you do a budget, when you guys get this budget, you just take all the people and you add them up, their exact salaries, it's not going to equal the number in the line. So there's play in it, just like if there was play in a police department budget or fire department budget. You don't see the police or fire chief coming in and say, "Hey, you know what, I got a little savings, I'm just going to grab another three firefighters."
But they also don't have required spending, Kevin.
It doesn't matter.
Their budget changes every year, ours is a set number, based on state law, by Chapter 70, which you know. So you're telling me that it would be good practice to set the number of teachers that Dr. Malone needs for the district, and that if he has a need in a particular school, he's got to wait to service that student in that classroom until he asks us permission for it?
We already went over that at a public school committee meeting, where it was stated that he can actually do that, all he has to do is notify us. The bottom line is, is we're just-
Which he does now. So what's the difference? Whether we set the number and give him the authority to do it on his own and come tell us later, or we give him the authority to spend within that line, if he doesn't exceed?
Here's the difference, I think you trust the superintendent a little more than I do. With that, I yield.
Counselor Kadim, you have a call.
And I'll just respond, you're absolutely right, because I don't think that Mr. Almeida or the superintendent have proven that their choice in hiring, or their practices of hiring, has put the school department's budget, or the city, in any kind of fiscal strain.
Exactly, because we're getting a lot more money, and as I said, we're in good shape financially in the school department, so we don't need to go back and forth over it.
No, I, like Mr. Kadim said, I think it's a first, follow us off.
I do think if the council's going to ask those questions, you should come forth with an exact budget, so that they know exactly what each line item calls for. With that, I yield.
Thank you. If I could, so I apologize for going off on a tangent, but, you know, I want to get back to the Watson School. At the end of the day, you know, the superintendent found his way here to the city council, if he would've came when we asked it, we would've taken a vote. The question that I had, you know, they want to make it a contest about whether it's council president or the superintendent, from my standpoint, was talking about a monetary, budgetary standpoint, how are we going to hear it? I hear from taxpayers all the time, you know, and Counselor in seat nine can disagree with me, I know she's disagreeing, but, I, I'm sorry, but, you know, we hear, we don't want to raise taxes, we don't want to raise taxes, but we want to push something through. want to raise taxes, we don't want to raise taxes, but we want to push something through. So if we push something through, we might not have had $1.3 million, right? So if we would've had the superintendent here having a conversation, we would've got it done. You guys could've went out to bid, you could've had your great practice. That's what it is. I, I just, I get frustrated when, you know, the blame is getting shifted on city council as we're going to have things come through this council and we're just going to rub a stamp. Right? That's, that's it. We, nothing, nothing major transpired here. We were having conversations. It was the same conversations that would've been had, it would've been directed at the Watson School. That's it. But the superintendent didn't want to show up. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councillor in seat seven, councillor Pelletier.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Bo迪us for the presentation that you've done tonight. But I find it annoying tonight to see Mr. Malone sitting at the table, and he's playing with his phone, doing whatever he wants to do with his phone. He got three-minute input time, and some of it, text was about here, but not paying attention, and stay on the phone. Mr. Mayor went up, said a few words, he turned his chair, he listened. All night. I don't know, he got one or two, I don't know if it's computer, whatever it may be. But this body, the school committee, and you people, nobody else is on, on the cell phone. I mean, it's just, it's crazy. You know, we just shouldn't do that. I don't think so. 66 people that the school committee put on, was that grant money? Where's that money from?
The money is the additional chapter 70 money that we received this year.
That's not, that's not a grant, no?
No.
That's just, sorry. So next year, when it comes up again, do these people lose their job?
No.
Now, how long does it go on?
So we have, we have funding that is going to be sustainable for sev, for seven years.
Seven years?
And, so, you know, I just want to just comment just on the FTE piece. So as a practice, you know, I am very, very, along with superintendent, very, very mindful of positions that are being hired, and always have the best, you know, the school committee is always, you know, the schools are always first in mind. So I just want to be clear. I, you know, the practices that are used financially on the school side are very, very fiscally responsible, and are never intentionally meant to hurt the city in any, in any case. You know, we could talk about the other, the other liabilities, and I completely get it. I, I know, every time you add a person, it's additional benefits and everything you add, you add to the budget. The, the reality is, specifically like with healthcare, you know, we've, you know, the school side has, you know, quote-unquote, a healthier body. Meaning, our, our numbers have been stable year after year. You know, that's the big, you know, benefit piece on that side. So we haven't seen the staggering number, you know, on the scho, on the school side, you know, big increases in, in big things. But in addition to that, I do monitor all the FTEs that we have. I monitor everybody that's hired. And anytime we add an FTE for any reason, first of all, we communicate with the school committee, and if, and if any vote is needed for an additional position, for any, for any reason. And it's always justified with, you know, it's because it's for a student need, specific need, to address something specifically. And those are always the things that are in mind. So that's, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, you know, just to cover myself here, I want, I want everybody to know that, you know, it's always, things are done the proper way. And that's it. But, no, I'm sorry about that. I just wanted to rant.
No problem. You feel better?
No, no, I do, I do, I do. No. But, what were we talking about now? Because I just lost my train of thought.
66 positions that are...
But, okay, so I apologize. So the money that we're going to get here, it's going to be over 200, 200-plus million dollars. And, I'm not, I'm, you know, we have that in mind. We, we're very, very mindful of where that money's going to go. And at the end of the day, any additional needs that we put into the budget are to address student needs and student things that they need. So, you know, there's never any intention to go over budget to, to burden the city. So that's, that's it.
So, so you got the monies, and they're good for seven years?
Absolutely, yes.
All right.
Yes.
Raises, do we have a raise for Dr. Malone? 25,000?
So, we addressed that last night, so the, there is no raise for 25,000. The projection that was done originally in the budget, you know, we do our budget process, we start it very, very early. So before everything transpired, the budget, the budget was developed, a figure was put into the bu, the budget, it was addressed last night. About $10,000 was moved into professional salaries to cover, through the budget process, we added councillors, additional councillors to a couple of schools. $10,000 was added to fill that council need.
So is there an increase? I believe Mr. Councillor Pelletier has questioned, is there a salary increase for the superintendent?
It's just contractual, that's it.
How much?
Uh, just about $4,000.
$4,000?
Yes.
A year?
Just for the year.
You know, it's like, Mr. Malone already cost the city 25,000, and the thing goes on, it never ends. So now you hear that he's getting a 25, but he's not. But you heard he's getting 25,000. And even a 4,000, to sell that to the people of Fall River, you know, it's not sellable. It's not sellable. As far as I'm concerned, it should be out of the system, no more extra money, and do everybody a favor. I mean, you've got baggage all over the place, and you're trying to stay here. I understand. The money's good, everything's good.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Councillor, councillor C. A., your point of order?
Just a point of order. I mean, we're here to do the joint thing, and I didn't think, and I thought that you said that the meeting wouldn't go this way.
The meeting's been going very good, councillor. We'll stick to his financial questions, councillor.
I asked about the raise, whether or not he's going to get a raise. And if it's 4,000 or 25, it doesn't make a difference to me. I still got to sell it to the people of Fall River, and they're upset, which you, Mr. Malone, it is. I mean, I don't know if you go out through the city of Fall River. I do, and I get to listen. And to say that now we're going to give you a $4,000 raise, because why? Because you're doing a good job? I don't know if you're doing a good job. You know? But I have to live with it. And if you guys want to give him 4,000, or 10,000, or 15,000, then so be it. It's just not right to the people and taxpayers of Fall River. He's got a problem, we have a problem. So, you know, somehow, it's got to get corrected one way or the other. And if nobody, you know, wants to do anything, or think about it, or, we never got a report, or what's happening, everything was like in a back burner, what's going on? We don't know. What is going on? We don't know. And where is the end of this for you, Mr. Malone? Is it coming up?
Councillor C. Three.
I confirm with councillor Perrow, we're getting off.
All right, I yield, okay.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, councillor. School Committee man, Corey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Pelletier, I know that you're answering to a lot of your constituency. I respect that. And you've got a long track record of answering to your constituency, which has really, really, you know, contributed to your sustenance in government. So a lot of people like you, a lot of people trust you. I'm asking you to understand that as a school committee, there are many weights of judgment that go on in the course of our meetings. And to see our schools moving, like councillor Agia pointed out earlier, that our, our scores have been flatlined. Our scores have been flatlined over the past few years. There's no doubt about that. But the progress in our schools has been unbelievable. And fact of the matter, sir, because chapter 70 monies have been so low in Fall River, it's, it's contributed to an, an issue of teacher retention in our schools. We lose a lot of young, brilliant candidates because they're shopping other districts in the Commonwealth to make a hell of a lot more money than they're making in Fall River. So what we have to do to compensate for that, and Dr. Malone is a major league cheerleader for our, our staff, the body of people that work in our schools, and the progress that's going on. Now, that doesn't mean that things are flowing along perfectly. That means that things are flowing along.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Things are flowing along very, very well.
Councillor C. One, your point of order?
So if councillor in seat seven can't speak to the fact that he wants the superintendent to resign, then the school committee member should not be allowed to start telling us that the scores are flat, but we're making progress somehow, and that the superintendent is a cheerleader. He shouldn't be able to, to make the same argument. It's just on the opposite side. So we've got one spectrum, we've got the other. So if, if councillor in seven needs to, to shut it down, then...
Mr. Corey, I ask you to stick it to financial, if you can.
Okay, I'll stick to financial. As far as financial is concerned, the raise that he's getting is contractual, and that's, that's in the contract language. So that's, that's not a point of contention for next year's budget, because that's already been stipulated, sir. And all I know is that we're running our budget real, real well. And as Mr. Almeida just spelled out, all of our choices are made with due diligence. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Mr. Corey, if, if, or a member of the finance team, I got a question. You indicated, and it's really troublesome to me as one councillor, that we're losing good quality teachers to other school districts.
We are.
Okay, so my question to you, Mr. Almeida or Dr. Malone, has any kind of study been done, feasibility or cost analysis been done, to see what teachers are getting paid in other communities, where we're losing teachers to, and where we need to be financially?
We pretty much do this every single year. We do it in partnership with the FREA and the Mass Jesus Association, and look at comparable districts, regional salaries. And, believe me, you know, this, the goodwill of the committee approved 1.5% raises across the board for one year, this past year, across all the labor unions that we're able to negotiate with so far. We're now at the bargaining table for a success of three-year contract, and I think we're all in the same place, understanding that we will take care of making sure that we honor and respect the good work of our hard-working teachers, administrators, and support staff, and that those living wages reflect the reality of the work that we do. Just, I mean, just so, here's an illuminating thought. I mean, folks say, what does all this money go? Well, you know, five years ago, we were 4.7% second language learners. We're now at 19.8%. So think about, in terms of what the costs are, we're also at 80% poverty. These are real factors that have a real cost implication for our budget. So we've invested all these dollars, we want to make sure we're investing in keeping the teachers we have. Last night, we had discussions around how do we create incentives for folks to want to become principals that are vice principals. Same way we had discussion last night about how we want to do the same with our teachers and others. So this is something that you'll hear more from us over the next, or at the end of the next three months when we conclude our bargaining.
So if a teacher were to leave Fall River and they go to another district, are they getting paid substantially higher, Dr. Malone?
It depends where you go. I mean, everything's a negotiation in life. So some districts allow for negotiations beyond, but if you look at a master's plus 60 credit at step one entry, Brockton pays a lot more than Fall River. Providence pays a lot more than Fall River. New Bedford pays slightly more. Taunton pays slightly more.
So how do we raise that number to not lose teachers? How, what does that look like?
That's called collective bargaining, and I would be bargaining in bad faith if I informed you what we're doing. So I cannot do that publicly, that's illegal. So I will tell you that we're very cognizant of the fact that we want to do better for our people. Now granted, our employee morale is high, people are staying with us. Yes, we have some critical needs area to fill, but we've made really thoughtful decisions over the last several years about how to promote and retain and build new positions. Not new in terms of FTEs, although we've added probably 150 in the last four years, but, but really, when we think about the teacher leadership positions that we have, which are stipulation for folks to do more work, that, that, that pathway of honoring folks for the work that they do, we've built a whole tremendous array of, of this, professional development that's provided for free to get folks certified. All the great things that good districts do, we are doing those things to honor our people.
So is your salary, how many steps are there, Superintendent Malone?
Twelve.
Twelve.
There's 12 teacher steps?
Yes.
Okay, and, and the, the amount you would pay a teacher in step one is determined by collective bargaining negotiations?
Yes.
Yes.
Everything, everything in salaries is determined in collective bargaining negotiations.
Thank you. Mr. President, point of information, I don't want you walking away thinking that the superintendent telling you what his bargaining strategy is would be illegal, because as the superintendent knows, it's not illegal, it's just bad practice. Because there's 10 reasons to go into executive session, one of them is for collective bargaining, and the reason you go in there is because you're going to give away your bargaining strategy.
Strategy.
Right? There's nothing illegal. Everything needs to be public. And, and I think folks on that side forget things are public.
Technically, you're wrong.
No, no, technically, I'm right.
Because the labor union could fire an unfair bargaining charge, and then that is where the legality is.
You can, I'll ask the attorney. There's nothing illegal about giving away your bargaining strategy.
Attorney Assad?
During negotiations, if you speak outside of the executive session, you're subject to an unfair labor practice. And as everybody, everybody has sat here on both sides of the table, is that it would be extremely irresponsible for anyone to give away their bargaining position. And I think everyone agrees on that.
So Attorney Assad, would you agree with me that it's not illegal?
You're not going to go to jail, but you, you, you are subject to an unfair labor practice, and you're subject to potential fines. And, and once again, it, it's not a situation where, is it illegal? It's, it's improper, it's unauthorized, and you're subject to sanctions if in fact you do it. Are you going to go to the Bristol County Sheriff's Office and go to jail? No, the answer is no to that.
Thank you, Attorney Assad. But I, I guess your question was not whether or not they were actually, you, in order for that to take place, they have to be currently in collective bargaining.
Which we are.
Right? Okay, so maybe you clarify that, that's, that's one thing.
We are, thank you.
Thank you.
May I answer your question?
Field goal, perfect, right down the middle.
I've been here for three hours, I haven't answered one question about Watson. Would you like to ask me a question about Watson? I know you...
Oh, no, I'm good. You guys turned over $1.3 million for us. I'm good with Watson. Do you want to add, answer some other questions? I've got a ton of questions. You going to resign?
Any financial questions that we have, this is...
You going to resign? I mean, can we talk about?
Councillor.
No, I got, I got financial questions.
Your financial question, councillor?
I do got financial questions. I got financial questions for the superintendent. He's going to wait for the budget. I mean, that's fine. When I have the conversation, I was going to try to be nice about it, but...
Councillor in seat one has the floor, he has a financial question.
In terms of your judgments and settlements, you told councillor Lee that that number was extremely high last year, unreasonably. What do you, what do you plan on budgeting this year?
For this year? Yeah, I am going to level fund what we have from this year to next year.
Which is what?
Which is about $300,000 in illegal services line. And we have also, we also have some money in the workers' comp line.
In the workers' comp. Mr. Superintendent, are you making a recommendation to the school committee to increase the judgment and settlement lines?
I've already presented my budget as is. You'll get a copy of it.
Mr. Superintendent, I can't hear you speaking to the microphone.
I'll probably get a copy of the budget in the next one, they're going to get their copy. Probably get a copy of the budget in the next one. They're going to get their copy.
You can't answer the question, Mr. Superintendent, as to whether or not there's going to be an increase?
We just answered the question. We just said we level funded that line.
No, no, no. My question was to you, Dr. Malone. Are you making a recommendation to increase the line item for judgment and settlements to the school committee?
I've just answered your question. The answer is no. I've level funded that line item.
Okay.
No, you just, you just.
I just said that to you.
Just now, right. You didn't answer it the first time.
Obviously, you weren't listening.
It was a yes or no question, Dr. Malone.
I was listening very carefully to what you said.
Answer the question. We don't need to be animated. Counselor in seat one.
So how do you plan on, how do you plan on addressing the five outstanding MCAT cases that $300,000 is not enough? So where would you find funding? How does the city council vote to approve the bottom line?
So we have, we have.
That was directed to the superintendent.
Mr. Malone?
You asked me if I had a question. That's my question.
But that's not a financial question.
Attorney, how's that not a financial question?
It's definitely a financial question.
Let me answer your question in this way. Counselor Kadim, under chapter 71, section 37, the school committee is the sole legal regulatory authority for all issues with the superintendent and chapter 70 spending. The specific issue that you raised has been properly and fully vetted by this elected body and disposed of in accordance with their authority. And under advice of legal counsel, I will not making any more further comments on this subject. Thank you very much.
So my question was, are you making a recommendation to increase to cover outstanding settlement judgments?
You know, I got to interrupt for a moment, because now I'm starting to get counselor and people looking at me as if we can't ask financial questions. This meeting is being held for the purposes of asking long-term financial forecast questions. If you don't want to answer the question, just say no, I'm not going to answer the question. We don't need to be animated. We don't need to make noises. We don't need to put our hands up in the air. We can be professional like we've been professional for three hours. I'm going to allow the question. If you don't want to answer the question, say you don't want to answer the question.
I believe I just answered his question, and I'm ready for the next question now.
You're not ready for anything, Mr. Superintendent.
Counselor, your question. Your financial questions to the superintendent, please.
Yeah, in terms of your line item budget, are we going to see any increased training for discrimination or diversity training for all employees, including yourself?
So we invest in professional development each year. We ratchet up based on needs that we have. We know we have needs around addressing certain specific issues involving diversity and child welfare. And we will be providing professional development for all employees in those areas.
Including yourself?
I'm always involved in all the professional development that we do.
But are you going to be taking the professional development?
So I just recently, just this past week, finished special education professional development. I will be taking the work that we're doing with our partner CAC organization in this upcoming months around child welfare, the diversity work that we do. I always participate in all that we've done in that regard. So the answer is yes.
But, so that's great. So I don't think you were listening to me. My question for you, Mr., for Dr. Malone, I'm sorry, Dr. Malone, was whether or not there is discrimination training that is going to be taking place and whether or not you have budgeted it and accounted for it in the school budget for all employees to take. And do you plan on taking that discrimination training as well?
To answer your question.
Your point of order? I can't hear you.
How is whether or not the superintendent is going to participate in professional development? A financial question.
The question, I believe, Mr. Counselor.
No, no, he asked if it was budgeted, but then he asked if he was going to take it.
Did he answer the question?
Yes. He answered the question.
No, he did not.
It is budgeted.
It is budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't hear that, because there's a lot of like political debate going on.
I'll just say this, Mr. President.
He did not answer the question, Mr. President.
I didn't hear him answer the question either. Maybe I'm having auditory hallucinations. Mr. Counselor Kadim has the floor. If you can, please ask your financial questions to Mr. Malone, please.
Still waiting for the response to the first question.
Dr. Malone, your question, the answer to the question is you have budgeted for discrimination training? The answer is yes or no?
So each year, our attorneys on the student support side, which is Attorney Joyce, we provide trainings around discrimination, around ethics, around 51As, around mandated reporting, around child welfare. So yes, all of that training is part of our professional development expenditure. And under law, all of us as licensed educators have to take said training. So the answer is yes.
Thank you.
So that includes all of the leadership staff, that budget line item?
I just answered that includes all of our licensed employees, yes.
Okay, are you licensed? Don't answer it. Okay. Well, I was going to ask him if you would allow him to answer the question. I was going to ask if there's a financial implication, whether or not we reimburse his license, but, okay, so let's assume, so let's assume that we know what my questions are. Okay?
Let the counselor ask his questions without interruptions, please.
Thank you. Is the mayor now in charge of this meeting? Financial, okay. So the attorney, Manalte, McCavanoi, Joyce, and all this, so from, I guess, the beginning of the year, you know, we got 17,000, 20,000, 5,000, 7,000, 9,000, 3,000, 5,000, 4,000, 6,000, 3,000, 7,000, 10,000, 14, 18, 23, 8, 11, 30,000. Is any of this training?
Yes. Are you talking about bills to that attorney?
Yep.
Yeah, includes training, includes public records requests, it includes legal expenses involving special education litigation and other policy upgrades around student support services, all those things. It's all money invested in everything that we do, student related.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions. Appreciate it. I yield.
Any further questions? Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deon.
I only have one question. Why are crossing guards not considered employees of the school department?
So under the state law, crossing guards are not considered eligible expenses under net school spending, and they are the responsibility of the municipality. And I think that's left over from, oh, it's not left over. It resides in what used to be, when we talk about public service, under the police departments in most communities, which it is in ours as well.
Oh, I was under the impression it was under the traffic department.
Yeah, traffic enforcement, right.
Interesting. So they're specifically for the school, but yet not able to be considered employees of the school side?
That's state law, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor.
Quick point of clarification on that.
Sure.
And I don't know exactly where it is, but I always wondered that myself. And like I said before, we used to not be funded properly, but that's something that we could always consider if we said, I think it may be 30 or 50,000. It's not a lot of money.
It's not significant.
But in our indirect cost agreements, we could always, I think as a committee, say that we wanted to reimburse that. But that's food for thought, because if those things are making sense, how can we help the city? I think in changing some of those things, we could do that. I yield, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You yield, Counselor Deon?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Just a point that I feel like, I feel as though Counselor in seat seven, Counselor in seat one's question, even though there was, you know, a couple of, whatever you want to call it, digs or whatever, they were financial questions. I think we do have an obligation to be concerned about the behavior being a legal cost. I don't think that's out of the realm of asking those questions. I really don't. It could, you know, and it could be done with more civility. I agree with that. But at the same time, this is a very significant situation that I think is impactful to the community. And we can have that conversation on a financial level. And their questions were financial, even though, again, there was a little bit of back and forth. I think they were financial questions, and they were, they were valid questions asked. And just to say thank you to Kevin Almeida for, Kevin Aguirre, for at least being honest about saying that the scores reflect. Because my line of question in the beginning of this meeting was about whether or not all the increases, whether it be, you know, contractual or obligation by the state, these increases are still having a huge impact financially on taxpayers that are struggling to get, you know, make their ends. Especially the population of people that don't have children in the system that still have to pay into it. I think that that population of people usually gets forgotten in these conversations. So that's the angle that I was trying to, you know, approach today from the eyes of that person, the person that has to pay into the system, whether it be to CSO project or anything else, it all, it all adds up after a while. So that's, and I feel like the system itself, and we're all subject to it right now as officials, whether it be administrative or elected, we're all subject to the system right now. And I'm just always trying to find a way to figure out how we can take the burden off a little bit. I think that's just important to do. So again, Mr. Aguirre, I appreciate the fact that you were honest about the scores. I think that's one thing we have to keep our eyes on as we go forward, so that way the taxpayer is seeing a tangible result to what they're paying into. And I yield on that. Thank you.
Thank you. One question I have lastly is, in your presentation, Mr. Almeida, you indicated ESER funds. To date, ESER funds have been spent on private schools, COVID rooms, technology, and transportation. Can you elaborate a little bit on that as transportation? What kind of, are you?
We, the school committee set aside a million dollars to fund the portion of the transportation for this year.
The school committee authorized a million dollars of ESER funds?
ESER funds, ESER one funds.
ESER one funds and apply it towards transportation?
You're talking about last year?
Yeah.
Well, the vote was, the vote was taken last year prior to budget ratification, so.
So the question, so the question is, can you, Mrs. Sahadi?
Yeah, I don't believe anything's been charged against that million dollars at this point.
It has not yet.
So the million dollars is not currently being reflected in the city's general ledger for the quarter ending March 31.
It has not yet. Correct. Again, I have to project out to the end of the year.
Right. No, I'm just saying, I just wanted to be clear that nothing has been charged against it. What ended up happening last year, just for clarity on all of this, is the Department of Revenue through Sean Cronin's office required us to move that million dollars into a special revenue fund and include it there as opposed to including it as a revenue source in the general fund. So right now, all of the transportation costs that have been incurred to date have been posted to the transportation line item in the general fund.
Ms. Almeida?
I agree with everything Mary Sahadi just said. So, but there's one other point I want to make. So we've talked a lot about trying to partner with the city. And, you know, from my standpoint, I have a lot of, a lot of people that I talk to at Masbo, they, you know.
At where?
Masbo, which is my association for business managers. And there's not a lot of instances like we have here where, you know, we've given the million dollars, the school committee approved a million dollars towards transportation for this year to offset, to help the city. They took a vote last night on the 1.3 million dollars to help offset the FY '22 budget. We approved 1.7 million dollars in equipment and facility repairs and everything else last night. And over the last several years, on top of that, we spent 1.7 million dollars that we could have potentially requested through the city to have things done. You know, I think we've been pretty good stewards. I think we've, we've offered a lot of support to the city, and, you know, we'll continue to try to do our best as we can going forward.
And we'll continue, Mr. Almeida, we'll continue to do the same as well, because I want to make it clear too, from the city council's point of view, we have done yeoman's work in approving 99% of the capital projects that the city has in the city's funding. So it's a joint partnership with what you do, what we bring to the table, what the mayor brings to the table. Over the last six years that I've been on the city council, I've seen tremendous work done to our schools as thanks to counselors and the mayors at the time, and the current mayor of sending projects down to fund for capital projects. So it's a joint project. I guess my question is geared more towards transportation. Are you saying that you can utilize ESER funds to pay for transportation?
If the, if approved by the school committee, yes.
So I guess my question, we've spoke about, last question, and then Mr. Aguirre needs to speak. We've been speaking about creating stabilization accounts. Is it crazy, and I'm just throwing things out there, to use ESER funds, if the school committee approves it, to pay for transportation in lieu of the city making that appropriation into, or some of it, or all of it, into transportation, we take that and create a reserve account for future years?
As far as, you know, transportation being spent on the ESER funds, that would have to be a vote of the school committee. The school committee would have to approve that. Now, I don't, I'm not sure how you would do that. So are you suggesting you're going to take monies that you funded in transportation, let's call it a million dollars this year, and you're going to physically make a transfer into a school stabilization fund for future years to offset potential increases going forward?
Mrs. Sahadi, you want to speak?
Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
I see you raising your hand.
The mechanics of how it would work is the savings would fall out as free cash, and then this body would, or we would come to this body for a transfer from free cash to a specific stabilization fund called school stabilization. Would have to be established, of course, but it would be a specific stabilization fund, similar to when free cash gets certified at the end of the year, and we transfer that free cash into the general stabilization. If the transportation were to create a surplus, we could take that portion of the surplus that was certified as free cash and establish a school stabilization fund and transfer, ask this body to transfer into the school stabilization.
So I would be okay with that, as long as we're meeting net school spending.
Right. Transportation isn't a net school spending eligible expense, as we all very well know.
So as long as we're meeting net schools. See, the issue with the whole reserve fund, and I don't disagree with Mr. Aguirre. I think it's actually a great budget policy. It's great strategy. The problem, the problem with our district is, and legislation doesn't allow for it, is that if we did have funds at the end of the year, and we did have the ability to transfer into a reserve fund or into a stabilization fund or whatever it may be, we would do it if it was allowed. It's not, it currently is not allowed. It's legally not allowed right now.
Right. Yeah, and just so you know, School Committee man, Aguirre, myself, and our council vice president were on a conference call with Senator Roderick's, I want to say a month ago, and we had that very same conversation. Was there an appetite at the state level to see if they would be able to create a reserve account for things like this and put it in the language? And there really isn't. But I guess the city, hearing the debate tonight, the city could possibly do something like that. I guess we, I worry, if we have $10 million assigned for transportation, and then you take 5 million, if the school committee authorizes you to do that, of course, 5 million from ESER funds, and then the city then takes that 5 million that they were going to put in for transportation, I'm just throwing this out there, right, because that's the point of this meeting, and put it towards a stabilization account for future transportation costs and/or city costs, school department costs. I don't, I don't see the harm in doing that, because you guys have a lot of, you guys have a lot of money coming from the American ESER III funds with ESER II. That's big, big money. So I guess I'm throwing it out there and have debate with your school committee members to see if there's an appetite for that, with the understanding that we don't want, of course, set up a structural deficit either. Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just on that issue. So last year, we had 11 million dollars that we had set aside for transportation. So due to COVID, that money was, so if we had an 11 million dollar bank account on the city side, 3.6 million of that didn't get spent. So the city took that money, 3.6 million approximately, in essence, doing exactly what you just said. My question would be is, where did that money go? Because the bus vendors who were out money never got a settlement. Some districts had different things in there, some litigation, some don't have litigation. So we took the 11 million, we took 3.6 million in somewhere. They plugged their budget, they did whatever they wanted with it, without a vote of the committee. So now the next year's budget, the current one we're in, is 11 million dollars. The school department said, we'll give you a million dollars towards transportation. My question to all of you and to the city is, we gave you a million bucks to spend out of the 11 million for transportation. If we only spend 8 million, are you giving us that million back? Would be my question. That's the conversations that don't happen. So we want to be partners, but when we give you a little bit of money, we never get this conversation back to say, oh, by the way, we didn't need that million. We're going to create another fund. So as much as I'm trying to be supportive of the city, at the same time, we all got to get real here and say, let's talk about what the real finances are. Where's the money coming and going? And I agree with Counselor Kadim, we need to have these conversations before. This conversation right now about that million bucks would never have been had if we didn't have this meeting. And if we, if you want to create those accounts, now's the time, because you're going to have a million or 2 million bucks in savings. We're going to save a million dollars in healthcare, we found out yesterday. So you're going to owe us another million bucks next year from the city. So in essence, you're paying that money with our own money. We're giving you the money to pay us. At some point, you got to look at it as a two-way street here. We're trying to help, but let's not be pigs on either side. The other piece of it with the legislation, talked about it yesterday, Superintendent and I, Mr. Almeida talked about this a while ago. He's going to be sending a letter to the state, trying to get some sort of legislation along those lines, so at least we can start the discussion. But I just wanted to make it very clear to the council, when, if you have an 11 million dollar transportation and it doesn't all get spent, you need to ask the question of where that money went. I'm not saying they took it and stole it, but what I'm saying is, it's just part of the discussion. So now if we're not going to use the million, let's get it back or have us make the decision to say, put it in the stabilization. I yield, thank you.
Counselor President?
Yep, Mrs. Sahadi?
One point.
Sure.
So Mr. Aguirre is correct. There was a savings in transportation last year. There was also a savings in a number of other departments that weren't able to do projects or finish the year. We did also have, however, a 4.5 million dollar revenue shortfall. So that's where the money went. We had to balance our budget at the end of the year, and we had to take the savings in all of the accounts that didn't expend their appropriation through the year to offset the revenue shortfall of 4.5 million dollars. So it's not about putting 11 million dollars in a bank account. It's about balancing the budget with the same amount of resources and the same amount of appropriation each year. So yes, there was a savings in transportation, because the vendors didn't do the work, didn't, school didn't happen, students weren't going to school. But there was also a savings in many of the other departments. And then there were other departments that had overages, like community maintenance, as we talked about earlier, because the trash tonnage went up. So you take all of the pluses and minuses on the appropriation side, and you take all of the pluses and minuses on the revenue side. And in fact, we had a revenue shortfall last year of 4.5 million dollars.
Right. And I'm not suggesting that you took it and did anything nefarious with it at all. All I'm saying is.
I just wanted to let you know, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to let you know, it's not in a bank account anywhere.
I understand. But at the same time, I'm not on the city council. But if I was, what I would be asking is, then if we had to use the transportation money to pay for the trash increases, then what has the administration done to reduce the cost of the trash by making decisions that are within the power of the administration? The answer to that is none. So if you lower your expenses on that, you wouldn't need to take our transportation money that was saved. That might be a litigation that you have to pay out of somewhere, so you would have actually had those costs down. But the point of the million bucks this year is a valid question. If we don't spend the 11 million, and there's a million dollars in that special account that we gave the city to pay for transportation, is it coming back to the schools?
It's set aside.
It's a valid question.
It's set aside in a special revenue fund at the moment for the purpose of transportation. That's where it is.
Right. And what I'm suggesting is.
It's not part of the city budget.
I understand that. So we gave you money to spend on something that you're not going to spend in the current year. And all I'm saying is that probably should be a discussion, because it would therefore give credit to my colleagues and myself, the superintendent, Mr. Almeida, to say, we actually gave you a million bucks, and we're going to let you keep that, to show that we're true partners. That's all. I yield, thank you.
Mr. Costa?
Just one last thing, Counsel President. I'm sorry. I just want to go on record to indicate that we have been doing a number of things with regard to trash. Counselor Deon is part of a trash task force, and there are a number of people from the public. I know with COVID, they haven't met as often as they should have, but there is a group that has been put together to discuss ways to have savings within the area of community maintenance and solid waste.
Can I ask you a question, Mrs. Sahadi? How many times has that trash commission met?
Two or three, possibly.
Three.
Two or three times? And when were those meetings?
I'm sorry, I'm not on the trash force.
Do you know when they meet?
I, we have a couple of counselors that are on the meeting.
It's at the discretion of the DCM director.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Mr. President, through you?
Sure. Yeah, no, no problem. Counselor Deon is on.
So there were three meetings regarding trash?
I remember two, Linda. Were there two or three?
I think there were just two. Uh, there was an initial meeting, and then there was a follow-up meeting a couple of months ago, uh, about a month or so ago. Both of the meetings were held on Zoom. Mr. Pacheco's already, also on the, um, the panel, uh, so is Patrick Norton, so is Michelle Pelletier, so there's some business owners and some balance.
Right.
And they're looking at, and we've talked to the mayor, I mean, I've talked to the mayor, about looking at doing something with DCM, with some of the money that we get, should we put a facility there where we can have compactors, where we can separate things so that we get some revenue back? The bottom line is, it's costing us more money to get rid of trash, and for people in this city to get elected, they get rid of a trash free at ten dollars per household for, per month, and then they get rid of the purple bags. And when you get rid of the purple bags, I know people didn't like them, what have you, it ended up that you got more trash. You have to look at the surrounding communities, Westport has a dump, but Tivitan, Somerset, Swandy, they have bags, they, they have programs. So, what's happening is, our tonnage is increasing, so you got people from Tivitan throwing stuff in, you got people from Somerset bringing stuff in, so if you look at the North End, there's a lot more, uh, tonnage, and things are costing more, and because we don't really recycle the dirty recyclables, it's just like trash, it's, it's, it's really, um, it's something that's gonna take a lot to figure out. There's no fee that goes with it to help pay for that, to help offset that. So, it's gonna come out of your budget, until we figure out, you know, a way to handle it. And one of the things was, looking at doing some kind of a facility where you could separate cardboards, glass, because then you have a commodity that you can sell. How much you can make on that, well, that's yet to be seen.
Mr. Costa, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Councilor Perrin, and Councilor Dion. The reason I raise that is because we can talk about building budgets, and we had this conversation, I think, two years ago, the reality is, the city doesn't generate revenues. And so, I guess my question would be, in this year's budget, projected FY twenty-two, overall city budget, how much one-time money is in it?
Uh, just the one point six million, um, for the capital items, and I, let me say, plus the one point three that you voted last evening, because I would assume that's considered.
So, the one point, just for clarification, I don't know, I didn't hear you, you said to Mr. Costa's question, the use of one-time mon, monies is meant for capital projects?
Yes, it's one point six million dollars that will have a line item in the twenty-two budget, that will be for strictly capital. So, um, just, I, I don't have them memorized, but five mocked, um, police cruisers, one un-mocked police cruiser, um, some, a tree truck for the tree department, um, some additional equipment, thank you. Um, so there's a number of items, they will be listed separately in the budget, so that they're clear to everyone, and there's full transparency, but there are one point six million dollars worth of capital items that will be included in the fiscal twenty-two budget. The source of funding for that will be the stabilization fund.
So, there's no other government funds supplementing the city's FY twenty-two budget? Because that would be one-time money, so any of your cares money, or-
Well, for, there will be the, um, upper money, the four point five million that I've been talking about in terms of loss revenue, so that upper money will be in the budget. Um, the calculation for that upper money for fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five is yet to be clarified by the US Treasury when the guidance comes out, but there will be-
But in twenty-two, there'll be four and a half million-
Four and a half million in twenty-two.
Of one-time money, one point six in one-time capital.
Assuming that, right, assuming, right, assuming that the mechanism to calculate that at the moment is taking the individual items in FY nineteen, and comparing them to twenty, and anything that was a shortfall, it would be. However, I do want to make, um, a caution, I'll say a caution, because I know the mayor, um, says sometimes I'm, I'm negative Annie, but a caution is, is if the government comes out and says it's in the aggregate, that number's gonna be significantly less.
Right, but right now, you've built in the three hundred million, four and a half million, and then another two point nine million, one point three from the schools, and one point six from capital, right?
That's correct.
So, that, that cuts right to the conversation piece here, because we had this conversation two years ago. The beauty of the SOA is that the school department's Chapter Seventy allotment over the next several years is gonna go up approximately seven or eight million a year. Of that, the city's gonna own twenty percent of that.
That's correct.
So, you're gonna, about a one point six increase every year for the next several years. You can't keep up with that now, with the revenues you're generating. You're plugging budgets with seven point four million dollars of one-time money, so we can talk about partnering, and Mr. Aguirre hit the nail on the head, we gotta get real here. The issue isn't whether or not we can work together, the issue is, we need to stop using one-time money. We need to stop having trash commissions where revenue can be generated meet twice. If it was that important for the city to raise revenues, then those are discussions we should have been having. We sat here two years ago, because last year, we didn't have this joint meeting, and I said the same thing, that every year, the city can't keep up with its net school spending obligation year after year to begin with, let alone the SOA. And so, the, the school department's partnering, we have been. I, Mr. Almeida ticked it off, but I had him here, one point three last night from ESER funds, one point seven in capital projects we approved last night, one point seven in past capital projects we approved, and a million dollars in ESER funds for transportation, that's six point seven million dollars, that could have been funded, or should, or could have been spent within the school buildings, and within a school department. So, instead of doing that, we've, you know, partnered with the city. That's a significant amount of money, but the conversation piece that we're missing here is, where are the revenues? And what are, what are the ideas, what is the council willing to stomach in terms of ordinances, or whatever the case may be, to generate revenues? And mitigate the annual increases in, in tax burden, whether it be water, sewer, well, water and sewer's not tax, but, but whether it be the two and a half percent, um, property tax, or, I guess, indirectly to water and sewer. So, that, I haven't heard any discussion tonight about new revenues, what we were able to generate in revenues over the last fiscal year, and yet, we got seven point four million dollars in this budget, one-time money, and at some point, um, we gotta start talking about how we're gonna generate revenues, because you can't keep pace with your expenses. It just, it's, it's, it's gonna come to a head, and, and we'll continue to partner, because you're right, Mr. President, and others who've mentioned it, the school department's getting a great deal of ESER money. And, and so, the reality is, we're never gonna be able to spend seventy million dollars in, in, in schools. It, it's just not gonna happen. So, the reality is, we're gonna have to take on capital projects with that money. So, inherently, the city's gonna benefit from that, because you won't have to bond for those projects, and hopefully, you know, whether it's new roofs, boilers, windows, whatever the case may be, that money is not gonna be able to be spent on pencils, pens, crayons, notebooks, notepads, Chromebooks, whatever, it's just not gonna be able to spend that much money on those types of, of expenses. I agree with Councilor Lee, and I'll just say this, that, that, you know, our numbers have flatlined, and, and so, I think that comes from many, many years of not being at net school spending, not being at the minimum it requires to educate students. And that, Mr. Cadim pointed that out. And, and so, we are on pace now, um, I think we're in a fi, a, 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 a fine place in terms of our finances, um, and we'll continue to invest them. We can look at education as an investment or an expense, because that's really what it is. Are we really willing to invest in education to help our community? Because the reality is, a community's based on its educational system. Let's not kid ourselves, we have people who sell houses and real estate here, do they ask you about our school system? Of course they do, that's probably the driving factor for most people. And then, public safety probably follows somewhere around, but-
In Fall River, it's public safety a lot.
Education is the, is, that's the economic engine that's gonna drive the city forward. So, we could continue to talk about it being an expense to the taxpayers, but I think we need to shift how we think about things, and start thinking of it as an investment, because that's really what it is. Because if you don't invest in your educational system, and our, our children fail, that's great, but they're gonna go to Dartmouth House of Correction, and you're gonna spend triple the amount to house them there than you ought to educate them in our schools. So, again, I just, you know, I, I appreciate the conversation, just know that, like Mr. Aguirre, and I've talked to members of the committee, we're willing to partner with the city, I think we've proven that. And we'll have those discussions, but we need to start hearing something from the city, because the school department can't generate revenues, we're not a revenue generator. What revenues are available out there that we're willing, as a, as a community, to take on? And I don't see any on the horizon, um, and I don't see any coming anytime soon, and, and we need to start having those conversations, because this one-time money, it's great, it came at a huge loss for families who've lost individuals during this pandemic, uh, it's, it's meant to keep things on pace, but the reality is that, when this runs out in three years, we're gonna be right back to the same situation, talking about what revenues do we have, and how we're gonna, um, pay the expenses that we have as a city. But, thank you, Mr. President, for your, uh, for the opportunity, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to be here with you all tonight, and, uh, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Mr. Hetzler?
Thank you very much, Council President. Thanks, everyone. Um, I kind of echo the sentiments of my colleague, uh, Mr. Costa, right, we're here for the joint budget meeting, right, and what's my role, right? Our budget's set, that school spending sets our budget, right, and you have to fund it, really, realistically, that's what it comes down to. The issue every year becomes the balance, right? More money for schools, more money for schools, more money for schools, while it's taking away from all the other city things that you'd like to do, right? And we understand that. If it wasn't for COVID, right, there'd be no bailout right now, we're getting bailed out, right? Two hundred, like, hundred and forty million, or maybe not a hundred and thirty million dollars coming our way between the schools and the city, right? That's what's gonna keep us afloat, that's what's gonna keep us where we need to be temporarily for a few years, but where is the, the revenue, right? How is that getting generated? Like, my colleague said, we can't generate revenue on the school side. If we didn't have, we could never give you money for anything, really, right, because our money's controlled, we don't have money to give. ESER is the only thing that allowed us to give you that one-time money, and, and again, we'll partner with you as much as we possibly can, and I, I mean, I'm in favor of it anyway, I'll speak for myself, but as you can see, we've done that already, and I think we'll continue to. Um, I don't know, outside of generating revenue, what are the options, right? Legislation, do we try to change the formula? I mean, I've talked to the senator about that, that doesn't seem likely, right? The eighty-twenty, that doesn't seem likely. It's an option, right? We can advocate together, that's really, pretty much our only role on our side, it's the school committee. But it's really gonna come down to, you as the council, what are you gonna do to generate revenue? What are the plans, the mayor, what, what's happening here? Because it's gonna come a time where this money's not available, you know, a few years from now, insofar as it's gonna be faced with the situation with the SOA money coming in every year, increasing your costs every year, you gotta come up with that twenty percent, it's on track, so it's like one point six million every year, you know, as the budget's increasing, and now the SOA's coming, it's gonna be more money. So, um, I don't, I don't have any solutions, really, um, just a word of caution, you know? Uh, that's it, that's all I leave, thank you very much, I yield.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, um, we're in a really unique situation-
We give you, should we begin to the microphone?
Sorry, guys. Um, we're in a real unique situation right now. The schools do have a means to get money. They're getting the SOA money, because they had enough people in the legislature to say, let's give these people money. The money is gonna come to us in the form of a twenty percent surcharge or rate to go back to the schools. So, that is their means of raising money. Our means of raising money this year is coming from the federal government, in terms of ARCA, or ARPA, whatever they call it. So, we're in the same boat, it's just coming from different sources. Long-term, I couldn't agree with you more. I think we need economic development in Fall River, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that a mark, a lot of this market rate housing comes in, I'm hoping that down the road, we can use some of our money to build a transfer station, as was talked about tonight, um, those are the things we're looking at for trash, long-term. We met with Republic the other day, uh, we're back in the soil business, if we can put something together at the old landfill, so we are looking at creative ways to bring money to the table. And I do work with the school committee, I think it is important. Their money is gonna be extremely difficult for them to spend, and if they work with us, and we work as partners, we have a lot of money, we still don't have guidance on where it is, I got a call on my phone from Jake, I was asking him today to get me some information. The school's got a lot of money, we can work together. And of course, we are always looking for ways to get money to the city. Rest assured, that's what we work on. But, uh, but going forward, long-term, I think everybody's right, when this hundred and forty million dollars runs out, there's gonna be a reckoning, and hopefully, we're prepared for it at the time. Uh, that's why we are talking about a panel to sit, get together, and I'm gonna put one of the councils on it, to sit down and look at the ways that we can use this money wisely for long-term benefit for the city. I, I'm, I'm very comfortable sitting here with you guys, because I like ninety, ninety-nine percent of everything you say, because we're on the same team, we're on the same team. Schools, you know, I don't, I, I really don't like the way, it kind of seems like sometimes we're, we're against each other, we're not, we're on the same team. The budget's almost split in half, with what the city side decides to do, and what the school side decides to do. So, we have to work together. And I do like, uh, I, I thought that, uh, of all the things I heard tonight, I thought, um, Councilor Cadim's idea to meet earlier in the year was, because again, like, we're at the last minute now for this budget, you're getting a copy of it, the schools, we've done our budget, we're on to the next adventure, and again, if you're planning for a year out, I, I, I think that probably had more merit, we did this because it was listed like that in the charter. Um, I'm not always a fan of everything in there, but we do try to comply with it. But again, um, I, I'm gonna take that away from this meeting tonight, that I think maybe next year, even if we don't have it in the charter, we move our meeting up, and kick around some ideas just like this. And I do appreciate you all taking the time, um, I know most of the guys on the school committee are burnt, because we were out till eleven-thirty last night at our meeting, so I appreciate you just sitting there listening to us, and for that, I yield.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, Mr. President, that, uh, to echo my colleague, uh, Mr. Costa's remarks, uh, to the council and to the city, that education is an investment, and, um, the new high school's gonna be state-of-the-art, it's gonna be a great generator for our community for many, many years to come, it's gonna develop our children into a, a real American workforce, and, uh, hopefully, that's gonna be a, a, a glory point for this city for decades to come, that's what I'm hoping for. But I, I'm really hoping that the perspective becomes that education is an investment, and not a cost only, you know? We need to, in, in your discussions with constituency, uh, I, I would appreciate it if, if all of the council members would stick up for education as an investment, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Councilor Lee?
So, there have, no matter what we do, no matter where we go, even in the last meeting that we had, uh, trash becomes the conversation, it always seems to always rear its ugly head, people turn, you know, they always get tired of talking about it, but it's because it hasn't been resolved. If you bring on the taxes and the fees, as Councilor Pereira said, you're gonna have a whole new set of problems that I think we, we already know about. Um, and then, for, for the purple bag standpoint, which no one ever addresses, because maybe it's, there's nothing, uh, statistical that we can use to, uh, measure it, but the, the illegal dumping, I, I'm probably one of the few in this room that go out every spring and summer and, and do cleanups all the time around the city. The, the legal dumping that occurs with the purple bags is, is significant, and I'm just using my own subjective, you know, opinion on that, and I feel like I'm qualified to say that. You have the trash ba, the trash cans on, on the flint overflowing, I mean, you guys have to have remembered seeing all that, at least a little bit, no?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm just, am I speaking, all right, and then the parks, trash piled up to the ceiling in the parks, it happens even now, it was happening even double time when we had the purple bags out. So, I just want to throw that out there, that's gonna bring a whole new set of problems, so I'm not gonna be in support of anyone bringing purple bags back at all, in any way, shape, or form. The fee, I can understand wanting to get a fee involved, per unit is, is pretty excessive, in my opinion, um, but I'm sure you guys are having those conversations in your task force about it. I am the subcommittee head of the Health and Human, uh, I'm sorry, Health and Environmental Affairs. head of the Health and Human, I'm sorry, Health and Environmental Affairs. I've had more than one meeting with John Perry about composting. Composting, and Mr. Agia actually brought it up when we had, at the last meeting, composting was on the PowerPoint slide. And there just hasn't been enough push or investment from the executive side on it. I did an extensive presentation, and I did a follow-up presentation, because I had a very interesting citizen's input that said I wasn't doing enough for composting. So, and that's, and that's good, by the way, that that happened. So I wanted to make sure that people know that composting can be very financially helpful to offsetting costs in a way that it would not only provide less solid waste, but, so that would also offset that cost, but it could also possibly provide a commodity to put on, you know, to sell in any way, shape, or form. Or at the very least, what it does is, it helps us do the separation that you were trying to accomplish with a, with a transfer station. The only problem that I have with the transfer station is, and there's a couple of them, is yes, it would offset our costs for disposal fees, but there's a few places around us that have transfer stations already. So unless we're able to, you know, pull from other communities, they pay us to take it, we're not really going to make much of a profit on it. Maybe we make a profit on it, but I don't think it's going to be as significant as we need when you look at the fact that I believe the transfer station is estimated to be around $20 million, right? And that would be a bond, I'm assuming, right?
That's correct.
So that expenditure may not be worth the return that we get in revenue. So it's just conversations that need to be had, and I agree, we need to have more task force meetings. My subcommittee is always ready to have that conversation as well. But I, but I think there are some solutions, but not, I don't think the solutions are always just tax fee and, and, and just not care about the condition of, the financial condition of the taxpayer on that. So I yield on that.
Thank you. Last but not least, School Committee man Agia.
Yeah, I just want to have two action items, I think, that we can leave here and say that we did something. I happen to watch a lot of council meetings, almost all of them, and I've sat at home watching and knowing that all, everything, everybody's saying, we don't have money, we don't have revenue. This council was told over a year ago that around a half a million dollars in trash is going to businesses that are outside the ordinance. So, over a year ago. So here we are saying, oh, we need money, we need money, we need this. You, the city side, whoever you want to call in that blame, has left half a million dollars in fees, because if you go over the, that's a half a million dollars last year, half a million dollars this year. That's another million dollars that you can take in action on yesterday. And it's frustrating to sit back and say, well, the school's got us help you, the school's got, and I sit here and watch these meetings and say, when is somebody just going to make that decision? That you can't do this. You're increasing how many totes are out there. How much money are you spending on additional totes? You guys get told things, and then all of a sudden, they're still buying more and more, more totes. Like, it's unbelievable. So if that happened on the school side, this school committee would be going crazy, calling Kenny, calling superintendent like this, you can't do this. So you need to just take some action, would be my, you know, point of that. But lastly, may I ask if we are going to have a set time or vote for the Watson and the other field so that we can move on with the, I know we want to partner, but if we can leave here tonight with no one, you know, we gave you the 1.3, let's agree on the timeline, so everybody can know, and we can start to put these things in place. If we can leave with that as the last action item, I think it's a successful night for all of us.
Yeah, this will be on the agenda at our next city council meeting, which I believe is next week, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Next Tuesday. It will be on our agenda.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadim.
Just want to echo, I mean, I started the statements with the revenues about two hours ago, and I mean, it just, it literally is, is an issue, right? So I don't foresee a whole lot that's out there in terms of being creative without, you know, economic development, diversifying the tax base, things of that nature. One thing I will say is, I agree whole highly with the trash situation that Mr. Agia spoke with, about just now. I think this council has been talking about a number of issues, right? At the end of the day, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again, we are a legislative body. We do not have the authority to create fees. We only have the authority to approve fees that are coming down to us before the, the administration. So we continuously ask for information in meeting after meeting. And we just had this conversation with the parks, right, last meeting. At some point, you know, we need to get something down before us to take some action. So I, we can continue to kick and scream, we can continue to hold things up, but unless we get things before us, we can't take any action. We can't amend things, we can't, we can't add things into the council, but it has to come down from the administration. So I just want to make sure everybody is clear that we're just, as a council, and not just sitting on our hands, waiting, you know, to have a conversation about whether or not we want to implement fees. I think we need to start having conversations. I don't think we should have gotten rid of pays your throat. That's me personally. I had that, I made that statement. It wasn't politically expedient two years ago when, when we made that decision, but that was $2 million in revenue that, in my opinion, we were receiving as a city that wasn't being enforced fully. So imagine if we have the enforcement like we were supposed to, and it's the most fair fee that you can have. It's a user fee, right? So the amount of bag, the amount of trash that you put in a bag is what you pay for. So for the elderly who can't afford it, to me, is the fairest fee that we could implement, because you can control that, you can recycle. I agree with Counsel Lee. There are ramifications and negative effects associated with that, that I think we would, should have tried to address before eliminating it. But again, now, we're still providing a service. We're not getting $2.1 million. We went backwards instead of moving forwards on, on some of this stuff. So at the end of the day, any creativity that we get is still going to come in the form of a fee or a tax, which is still going to be passed through the taxpayers and the fee users, whether they're residents or outside residents coming in to use the service into the city. And we just need to be cognizant of that. That, that's all I'm saying. And at the same point where we're talking about a partnership, when we start to, you know, make those difficult decisions, whether it's pays your throat, whether it's a new fee, whatever the case may be, and if it's an unpopular decision, I would just ask that the school committee support that decision, you know, knowing that it fully generates additional revenue to help either the schools and/or the city, right? Because I think when we talk about partnerships, I think sometimes the council gets blamed for a lot of this, and we're the only ones that are taking onus on some of the tax increases that come down. It's not, it's not a shared burden, right? It's the city council did X, Y, and Z. So I will say that the city council only acts on items that are coming down. We could agree with it, right? And I'm not trying to shift the burden over to the administration, but that's the reality of the situation. The school committee is executive, the executive body on their side. We're legislative. So there's, there's the difference, and I just want to recognize that and, you know, highlight it. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President?
I just wanted to add to what Counsel Kadim said in, in response to Councilman Newman Agar. For me to pass the budget last year, I said that we needed to have additional revenues. It was, I think, the third time that the budget had come in front of us. Counselor in seat two and myself went and met with the administration about all of those barrels that are getting picked up that shouldn't have been. Counselor in seat two actually drove around the entire city and came up with an enormous spreadsheet of everybody who has barrels, how many they had, what address they were at, whether they were pink, green, blue, and presented it to the administration and the Director of Community Maintenance. They were supposed to get back to us within, it was, first it was a couple of weeks, and then it was a month. And this was back in August. Correct me if I'm wrong. This is August? July, maybe?
July, before.
And what came out of that was this task force, which unfortunately meets when the director sets it. I understand COVID, but Counselor in seat two already did all the work and presented it to the administration. There was discussions on how we were going to charge, whether it was two, three, four, five, or six family, and, and what all the different scenarios would be. And, and it's gone nowhere that I've seen. We are the, the legislative body. We're not, you know, we're, we're doing these things to help because it's our city. However, she did 75% of the work. Where's the other 25% from, from, you know, the person that's supposed to be in, in charge of all of those barrels?
I want to, if I can, point of, I'd like to add that we, I remember discussing directly with Mr. Perry about recycling barrels being at certain housing areas, too. And we were for years paying whatever disposal fees were for that. And we had to clean that up. And I believe there was like a payment in lieu of taxes coming in now for whatever was left over for those barrels. So it's just been a mess, and it's been a mess way before we, especially me, have been here, but we're trying to do what we can. But again, I believe, and, and I just think that this, the executive side of this needs to be more, like, more proactive on it as well, as far as other things that we can do besides just hammer down fees on people. So.
But to answer that question, I mean, Counsel Dion did all the work. She literally drove around the city and checked every single barrel versus the address, if it's a pink barrel, what it is, how many they have. It's like nothing I've ever seen before, and nothing was done with it. And that's, that's a shame. As far as this meeting goes, Vice Chair Costa, we didn't meet last year. It was right before COVID, and it was a very productive meeting. And we actually talked about at that time, doing it several times a year. And then, of course, COVID happened, so here we are, right up against the deadline again. But it should happen more than once, and it should happen sooner. That I yield.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
I just wanted to point out that as far as those recycled bins that were in some of the housing units, they were, they were removed, and the ones that housing chose to keep, they pay the dollar amount that is supposed to be paid for those recyclables. So that, that situation was rectified. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mrs. Sahadi, if you could please do us a favor tomorrow and email all counselors and school committee members a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that you gave us tonight. That would be great.
Certainly.
Hearing no further discussion before this council and school committee, Mr. Mayor, would you please like to adjourn your meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second in.
Deb, please.
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp? Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Ms. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Lartery?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a good night. Thank you for your time.